But I just wanna be clear for-
That is a clunker.
Why I'm just not-
Lord really constituent-
Roundtable worked really well, it was really simple.
CCMs. Um, hashtag CCM. Um, so-
It took me all the hierarchy.
Oh, no, wait, not Q- no, QCM. Thanks, guys, for listening. Um, okay, so, just to be clear, though, for anyone who, or for me and for anyone else who might be listening in or watching, this is separate from what we're already doing jointly as a town council and a school board for the budget outreach. Um, okay. So, um, I mean, we can do that first. I had just, I just wanted to quickly hear everybody's perspective on what, like, any joint objectives or goals we might have um, as, as two different teams kinda working together on stuff. Um, we, this is our first ever joint communications meeting. We've had joint finance meetings in the past, um, but we've never done joint communication. Um, so I just kinda wanted to, and I can take notes, too. Um, and anyone can jump in and just kind of, like, what are our objectives for being joint and-
Is that in Google?
No, I can put it in Google.
It's okay.
I'll put it in Google after I take the notes, because if I do it now, then I won't.
Okay, so anybody want me to start?
You can start.
Okay. I'll start, just because I think in part the, this is brought around because the communications committee of the town council two years ago um, did a little experiment in terms of trying these, what we called, we just called them roundtables. It was just an open forum where there was actually no formatting or structure at all. Honestly, it was really come in and tell us what you're thinking about, anything that you want to. Now, the topics did end up, um, a lot of times getting steered towards, you know, whatever was happening in town at the time, which at the time was a lot of budget conversations. Um, but it was really our, the communication committee at the time, it was our belief that a, that part of why folks in the community weren't all buying into this one town, one budget concept was that they didn't feel like their voices were being heard. Um, and we, I know everybody here at this table has heard that, um, a million times, and in some ways, it's frustrating because we think we're doing the best that we can to hear those voices. And, um, for me, what, what I, I think I heard and observed was, it's not just about, um, being heard from a podium, but being able to have dialogue, and that's what the open forums allowed. Um, there was question and answer and two-way conversation. So it wasn't, you know, trying to get everybody to agree, or that we were necessarily, again, incorporating all of their ideas, but that there was a, a more open, uh, two-way street, and that way, folks, when people feel involved, just like our students, right? If you involve the students, they typically get more engaged. I think the same is true of our community. And so that, for me, was the overarching goal back then, and for me, I think that's what it would be going forward. It's really looking to engage people in a, um, more robust way.
So can you give us a little bit more background as to what the, like, when they were, where they were, how they were attended?
Yep.
You know, your overall kind of takeaway from them?
Um, so we were doing them kind of, I think we held four in that first year. We, we didn't necessarily call them quarterly, but, um, it was more of a, as needed around, um, as topics, like, there was a, I think it was beach raking was something that was also very hot at the time, and so one of the meetings, again, we didn't set an agenda saying, tonight, we're gonna talk about this. Um, but we knew that that was a hot topic in town at the time, and so, o- obviously, it gave people a place who wanted to talk about that to come and, and voice some concerns and any additional issues that they hadn't been able to raise from the podium or whatnot. Um, so they would, I wouldn't call them monthly, and they wouldn't call them quarterly, but there were four that first year. Um, it was literally maybe, you know, the table was twice as long as this. We provided water and snacks. Um, and we had-
And that was last year or a year before?
Two years ago. And we had anywhere from, I think, the lowest attendant, attended one was probably fifteen people, but one, one we had upwards of forty-five people. Um, which, as you can imagine, as a facilitator without an agenda or a format, that can get, um, and we did have ground rules. You know, so we talked about sharing airtime, the need for mutual respect and civil, uh, dialogue, of course. Um, and, you know, there were, but overall, people really respected the opportunity. Um, and while we were discussing a few heated issues, people didn't get, um, it was handled well, I thought.
So was it only that one year that you did it?
Correct. Last year, the communications committee chair decided that that was not what the purview of that committee was for. Um, and so they didn't continue.
Okay.
So to, to add on, so to talk about broader goals and objectives, which this clearly fits into, I think one of the things that we discussed is communications more than just distributing information for people to receive. And I think my biggest objective is to create opportunities for people to be heard. So I, I think that's almost more important at this point. I think the BOE and the town council have made efforts to streamline the way the information is distributed out to the public. With the staff, with the e-newsletter's been phenomenal. You guys combining, streamlining where your information's coming from, excuse me. But for the communication committee, I think my biggest objective is to create opportunities to be heard. And I even, to piggyback on what Katie said, even though it's a hot-button issue, when people appreciate the opportunity, so to speak, you know, you, it softens the hot-button issues, and it's easier to talk about. So, piggybacking on that, to go back to the broader objective, that's my objective.
I think similarly, I have, I have been looking for an opportunity for us to be able to have a dialogue like Katie was talking about. It's very frustrating on both sides to have people up at the podium and not be able to, um, converse. You know, they say what they wanna say. We can't, as much as we might want to, we can't, um, respond in any way, whether, you know, however that might be. Um, and then they sit down and it's like, you know, I used to do it and, and leave thinking, that didn't matter, they didn't, they weren't even listening to me. You know, and, and I'm sure that's not true, but I think it's really important for us to be available to have, or to ha- to offer an opportunity to have some of that dialogue. Um, and for people to feel like they are heard, we might not agree, but, um, for there to be an opportunity there for, for some two-way, a two-way street for dialogue and, and just feel like, you know, there's some sort of um, avenue to allow that.
Yeah, I was just, so, you know, for me, it was also, it's not trying to, you know, down, degrade what we have. I mean, what we have is there structurally for a reason, and we need to operate under those structures to have a meeting that can be fluid and run efficiently. But I think for me, this is just, it adds another alternative.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, I don't think you can ever overcommunicate or overengage.
And I think it's increasingly important, right? We're living in a world where if you're not up here, maybe you're on Facebook, and if you're on some social media site, and it's just more, well, at least my opinion is that it's more effective to be face-to-face.
Well, and I think-
So I feel like it's even more needed.
I think specifically, speaking specifically to the BOE, one of the things that limits, uh, people in the community from feeling heard is that for our public comment, it's limited to agenda items. And so if people have hot-button things, or pressing issues, or concerns that they would like to bring forward to the BOE, there really, literally is not a channel to do that in a public forum right now. We don't have that opportunity.
Email or?
Email.
Phone call.
Or phone call, right. Do you guys have anything to add, Tom and Julie?
I think just being really clear about the purpose, so that folks don't come in with, um, expectations that might, you might not be able to deliver on, and reminding them of that as many, every time you bring the group, bring the group together, so that way, everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm certainly not, not opposed to it. I applaud the effort. I'm a little confused as to what our role, staff role is, if any, in this, uh, to the extent that we can be helpful, I think we wanna be. Uh, the first year through, we really didn't have much involvement at all. That didn't seem to be an issue. So, just wanna know what the expectation is going forward.
Yeah, and I think that's part of why we're here, right? We wanna figure out what those expectations are, what the format's gonna look like, and then, and, you know, may- maybe, maybe you won't. I don't know, I mean, we'll figure it out.
That's fine, I'm not so-
So, yeah. Um, so that's a good point, though. We need, I think we need to be really clear about what we expect, about the expectations.
Well, I will say, um, I know we did our best to take notes, and I think Larissa ended up coming to the last couple of them and taking notes. But the first couple, um, you know, it's hard to facilitate a meeting and take notes at the same time, especially a meeting like that. So, just, it, and I don't know that it has to be a staff person, but having a designated person to capture, you know, the essentials of the conversation, I think, is helpful.
What did you do with the, what would you do with the notes?
I still have them.
Can I just, I just wanna, so we're moving a little bit more into the details now about what those, this meeting will look like. I just wanna make sure everybody has, had a chance to, um-
I'd say for objectives?
Point out what their objectives or goals might be before we move into that.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Around area. Um, I just think, you know, outside of opportunities for engagement with the community, I think keeping town council and the school board aligned, it seeming that, um, increasingly so now and in the future, a lot of our strategic initiatives in the town and the school are so closely linked that this would be, this is a good opportunity for us to just brief you guys on, hey, here are the, the things that are coming down the pipe, and you do the same, to make sure that we're aligned, um, sort of what are our objectives and, um, you know, any changes that are coming out that could affect, uh, either town council or vice versa, and making sure our communications are, are aligned in that front.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thought I had is, uh, so it's just a toss-up for me between, uh, you know, trying to set agenda topics versus leaving it completely open. So I, I think there, uh, you know, advantages to leaving it unstructured at first, but, um, people aren't really clear about what topics they can broach, it's new for them. It might be helpful for us to give them my idea of what, you know, what the process is and what, you know, what we hope to accomplish. I like the idea of leaving it open and just seeing that where the energy takes it, but, uh, it's hard to predict attendance and engagement.
Yeah, so I should say, we did open each session with kind of like, why, you know, name, introduce yourself, and what is it that you really wanted to talk about? And then we would try to see if there were common threads, and then, you know, obviously tackle those things first, because if, if the majority of the people were all there to discuss for what they should-
So you'd have some pros, we'd have some pros.
Yeah, but it came, it was really, it was driven by them, which was the beauty of it. Again, it goes back to that, you know, involve me piece. Like, they got to set the topic. We didn't tell them, we're going to talk about this. Um, we will certainly, I think, have no shortage of ideas of, and things that we know we can talk about. Um, but I, for me, anyway, one of the key objectives was really shut up and listen.
Yep.
Listen to them and give them that opportunity. We, we all get plenty of time to talk.
The only thing I'd suggest we might have as a, as a fallback, in the event you, we try to organize, uh, the priorities based upon what people wanna speak, if there aren't any, if it's dead silent, then do we have a ready list, or is there, you know, some prompts? Maybe we've got a short list of, of, you know, top items that we might offer, as that is possible, get people to come in.
I, I would be surprised if people came without, without something to say. I mean, I see your point, but I, I, I would be surprised.
Yeah, I, I think people will come probably, uh, hopefully with their own hot buttons, uh, and the trick will be to see if that energy is shared or if it's just, you know, uh, constituent by constituent, issue by issue. But I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, with the three-four.
So I do feel like that's a, that's a discussion that, I mean, that's a decision that we could probably make right now. So I don't know what other people think about, I mean, I, I agree that if you have a format, it lends itself to a maybe more, um, focused and, and maybe, I don't know if I'm maybe not respectful, but at least a more focused meeting, and it's easier to facilitate. Um, and yet, you don't wanna offer them and be like, oh, you can't talk about that, because that's kind of what we come up against at, at the school board level when we do our public comments. So, um, if it was me, I would probably leave it open and, um, like Dawn was just saying, you know, have a back pocket. I mean, I would be, even if nobody came with specific things to talk about, I would be shocked if a discussion couldn't easily be ignited.
And that's what we found. Like, there, even if, if there was a, a moment of pause, we had a million things to, to, to fill the space and, and to talk about. And also, you know, the emphasis for me is not just, I don't want it to be just hot issues. I want it to be, gosh, you've got a great idea for, you know, our, our community has some super creative ideas out there for different initiatives and things that we may not have thought of, bring that up to us.
Anything they would like us to hear. Yep, yep.
So, do we feel like that's a decision, that we can just leave it as an open?
Yeah, and I would say one step further is instead of having a back pocket agenda, so to speak, we should have a list of questions to ask constituents.
Yeah.
We don't need to, you know, we don't need to dictate where it's going. We just, you know, we'll have a, we'll have a-
I mean, exactly.
Won't be hard.
What sort of expectation do you guys set, um, after the session? So, would you say that we get back to you on certain ideas, or if they brought up concerns, did the conversation end there? Like, what was the follow-up?
I think that, is that where you were going, Tom, with the notes and?
Yeah, notes and/or if there's an expectation that you wanna have folks in the room that can answer most of the questions that might come up.
Right.
Uh, all the most. Uh, is that a reasonable expectation, expectation, or is the follow-up as required?
Uh, I, I think there were a few items that came up that we had to, you know, say we'll have to get back to you on.
Yeah.
If we could answer questions, if we could answer it on the spot, because we had the information, we would, obviously. Um, I'm trying to remember. Part of those, that, part of those notes in the conversation helped drive the next session. I do know, I do remember that. So we could see where the energy was, and we would, could kind of continue that, um, you know, if that's what people wanted, and we did that with a couple of things.
Well, I would, I would suggest that we, any notes we take, even if they're at like a broad level, just like, um, bullet points, would then go up on, on our webpages.
Sure.
Um, that way, people have an, you know, even if they weren't there, they might have an idea of what, um, happened, or they could say, oh, you know, I'll go next time because, oh, look, they talked about this, or whatever. Um, but I think Tom has a good point, too. Like, are, is the expectation for us to have one of them or both of them there? I mean, that's a big ask.
I think that during the town council communication committee meeting, I think we pretty much determined that it would be elected officials only, and then Larissa did offer up her time as a note keeper.
Okay.
Um, so I don't, as far as, am I remembering this correctly?
Yep.
Right. So I think Larissa was kind enough to say, hey, I wanna go to these anyways, so I'll sit in the back and take notes, and if you wanna reference me, you can. If you can't, if you don't, you don't. So as far as expectations from staff, I think, I don't wanna speak for, she's not here, but I feel like she said, I will be there, but not be there, so to speak.
Well, and I think we could say, if, if Larissa's there and she wants to use her time for that, that's great, and we'll use her as the note taker, but I wouldn't ask. If she's not there, then one of us can do it.
I think we have enough evening and-
I don't, I don't feel comfortable asking her to do that as a commitment.
Yeah. Completely agree. Yep.
It's not, it's not just that, though. It's really, uh, it may change, having staff in the room in the conversation may change and may frankly stifle the, the conversation.
Yep, yep.
And we recognize that and don't wanna stand in the middle of it. I see this as, as an initiative by the elected officials.
Yeah.
We wanna do what we can to support, but we, we don't wanna impose.
Yeah, and I think as long as you guys are ready for the email the next morning going, okay, here's my fifteen questions I couldn't answer. Please get back to me. Um, but I didn't, like, when Julie left the room at the budget outreach meeting, you had somewhere else to go. You were there for the most part, and then at the end, I was on my own for like fifteen minutes, and I literally had four post-it notes that was like, I, I, and I just said, I don't know the answer to that. Great question. I'll, I'll find out and get back to you. I think people are okay with that.
Yeah, me too. And I think that that's a role we're all comfortable doing. I mean, I have no problem going back to Julie's questions and just saying, I don't know, I'll have to ask.
And the danger in this, from my perspective, is that, you know, we're tilting at windmills, that we're chasing someone's personal crusade. That, that's not a good use of staff time, but we'll know that when we're there.
Right.
I just flag that as a potential. When you open it up for, let's talk about whatever's on your mind, uh, a, a simple question can require, uh, you know, a detailed response sometimes. So just-
That's, that's, that's kind of what I meant to, uh, expectations, not as much more elegant, but, yeah, I think we need to be clear whether we're just hearing or whether we're acting, and, and just set expectations on-
Well, we can't act.
Right, so-
Right, so I think, I think we just need to make that clear in, in terms of what the expectations are, the information that, that we're being given.
I suspect so much good can come from someone just having a forum to ask their question, whether or not the answer's provided then, or even at a later date.
Or even just somebody say, I hear you. Let me, let me find out the answer about for you.
I see the value in, in-
Yeah.
People wanna be there.
Having the forum for that purpose alone.
But, but I do think that we need to be crystal clear that we cannot take any action. Like, you know, there might be two board members there, but there's, we can't do any, we can't take any action outside of the board. So I just want, I feel like that's gonna need to be, I mean, you guys can't either, but, um-
Yeah, and we can put that right up.
Yeah.
On a flip chart or whatever we use.
I think having some sort of, like, exit slip or way to gather feedback from folks who do participate might be really helpful, because it could either inform, maybe folks after a few times might say, oh, it'd be more attractive if there was a topic, or, you know.
Yeah, I wish we had done that, actually, after the office hours, when the legis, when the state legislators held it. I wish that we had kind of, as people were grabbing their coats or whatever, just had people fill out, you know, a card to let us know how it had gone. Because I had my own thoughts, but, you know, whether or not it was different to be the elected official versus the constituent, I don't, I don't know. That's what I would be curious.
You know, one, one thing you could do is part of your agenda to end with that, to go, like, you start with everyone kind of, you're just saying, what are you here? What we like to talk about, end up with a quick little run-through, uh, how can we improve the next session? Just as another way to get feedback.
So as a sample agenda, I'm just, we would basically do like introductions, and then, um, well, elected official introductions, and then I think whoever's in the room would kind of do an introduction and like, why am I here type? Is that, that's-
Absolutely.
And then, and then really, it's discussion, right? And then at the end, we could put something like Tom said, like, um, you know, I don't know what to call it, but, um, and then we could also offer exit slips, I think, in addition, because there might be some things people wanna write down that they're not comfortable talking about.
I think, no, not, you just dragged my memory. I think one of the sessions, I can't remember what it was, but we were looking to get feedback around something, and so we had a pretty good-sized group, kind of thirty to forty people, and we split them into four groups, and we had, um, you know, four, like a jigsaw. We had a jigsaw kind of literacy strategy to pull ideas, because we were just, we were actually soliciting their ideas to help with our problem. And people really liked that. They didn't come there that night thinking that that's what they were gonna be doing, but they really enjoyed being a part of that process. It might have been related to public safety building, or we were gathering-
I think it makes sense to have some structure for consistency, but then be prepared to be fluid.
But depending on that time of year, like, there might be something coming, you know, maybe it's, you know, so, you know, there's been talk about the Scarborough Downs and schools, and we'll, you know, what are their ideas and thoughts about that? And be, and that's, again, I, I think, for me, it gets to that piece of people feeling like they're involved.
So one thing we could do is we could decide, you know, if it's twenty or more people, we'll break it up into, you know, groups, like, one board member, one board member, one town council, one town council member, and people can kind of float between the groups. Um, I mean, we, that's a, that's an arbitrary number, but just to make it more manageable, as opposed to always having like this giant thing where, you know, by the time five people talk, our hour might be over, and then, so I don't know. What, what do you guys think about that?
Yeah, I think we can wait and do that after the, what are you here for, potentially. So we could group, strategically group people, we need to, based on what their topic's on.
Okay.
That may work, it may not work, if they're all there for the same thing, and just kind of divide them on the middle.
If you have a really big group, you could use like an Ed Camp model, which is where folks would have like a post-it, and they would start by just writing what are their, what they're here for, and then you sort of compile the post-its based on similarities, and that's how you form groups, um, if you end up with like fifty people.
Yeah.
Because I do think you'll have more engagement in, in smaller-
Yeah.
In smaller groups. And then just circling back to sort of the objective or the goal, and thinking, I don't know if this is part of the bigger why, but, um, you know, would, would one of maybe your intended outcomes or your purposes to be, be to build a stronger sense of community, or to get to know each other more, or to engage with each other as well?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And so I think if you put that out there, if that is part of your why, and you can work on the language of it, so being really clear that this is a community-building activity as well, or process.
Yeah, I like that. Well, and I think honestly, what might be a good idea is when we introduce this, to put some of these objectives right there in our text.
Well, I, yeah, one of the things, and we can come back to this, if it's not, right, you know, right now is not the right time. But one of the things I did wanna talk about was how we roll this out.
Mm-hmm.
Because we definitely have a saturation problem in the community where people are confused in some cases, or it just goes in one ear, not the other, because they have so many other commitments. You know, what makes what we're suggesting now different from the budget outreach, and what makes that different from listen to learn? And, you know, because there are other opportunities that currently exist, the legislative open, you know, office hours. And so, one thing I would really like to be purposeful about is making sure that when we do launch this, we take that into consideration. And we've, we've seen, like, branding and, you know, being really strategic about how we message the community is really important. And so, like, you know, I wanna be really thoughtful about how we put this out.
I agree, and one of the things we talked about when Paul was at our meeting was that we wouldn't start this until after-
Budget.
Budget, because we didn't wanna confuse the budget outreach sessions. And that when we do this, and when we plan the dates, that, you know, maybe the budget season is a hiatus.
Um, and the dates, the dates have been set.
One of, and the first one's in March. First one is before the budget.
And by the way, on my calendar, it shows this town council roundtable.
I don't have that. Where'd you guys get that?
That was, I asked, because I asked Larissa to send me an invite, so I could get it straight in my calendar.
I can send it to you.
Okay. I have the, I thought you were talking about the dates for the, um, budget outreach ones.
Those are set.
Those are set. I have those.
Those are set, and we're all assigned.
Yeah. I'll give, I'll give you the, 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 the first one is scheduled on March twenty-sixth.
So if that was, so in my opinion, that should not be the first one.
Okay.
Only because I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to have cross, I don't want anyone to be confused about the purpose of it.
When's the first budget outreach meeting?
I mean, the budget outreach is different.
So it's a month before the, the first budget outreach, though?
But it's three, what, a week before, not even the first, the first reading of the budget?
Yeah, a week.
So, so mostly that it'll be questioning on the budget that-
Yeah, that's a fair point.
You can't really answer.
Yeah.
And I, I don't, I'm cautious that that would set a sta, a precedent for the topic. That this would just be viewed as another opportunity to talk about the budget, which has its, you know, like, us offering our time, and we're saying we wanna talk to the constituents about what they wanna talk about, what they wanna talk about the budget. I don't really wanna be like, no.
I think it was mostly such just to make it quarterly.
Yeah.
Well, they were just trying to get-
Yeah, branding and messaging. I think one of the things that, the drum I've been beating since we started, we should call these things something, and quarterly would be something that is consistent. And so I would, my, my feelings are that we, we go ahead with the twenty-sixth, because it's literally the end of the quarter, and-
When is the next one?
June twenty-fifth, which will be right before the fourth vote on the budget, so that could get-
Stop it.
Well, no, but I mean, but, but there's a, there is a, there's a possibility that, are we gonna sit around and have this conversation if, you know, I, I, I don't think the budget should dictate what we're trying to do.
I can see what you're saying.
I think the other piece is we have an ability to make that, that doesn't have to be the whole hour. Are we just doing an hour, or are we doing two hours?
Two hours, from six to eight.
So we can say, if, if, if thirty people showed up and their energy is around the budget, we can certainly devote a certain amount of time to it, having them understand, look, it's, it's still evolving, so we may not have a lot of these answers, but it'd be a way to get some early feedback. And then, but we're not gonna spend the whole two hours on that. And we can just, we can shift and make that happen. Um, but I hear your concern. I'd be fine going, I could go either way. But I also think if, if the idea is to get these branded away from having to be around the budget at all, then the quarterly piece, you know, we still wanna have it. And I actually, I think Julie's idea around, because that's, that is truly, that is exactly why we did it two years ago. We wanted to get people from the various groups in town, you know, at the table, meeting each other, talking to each other face-to-face, because we know when we build relationships face-to-face, it changes the game altogether.
So the, the ones two years ago, they, were they primarily town council? They weren't joint town council board?
It was not, it was, it was just the town council communications committee that ran it.
Right. So that, that's, I think, how, at least my recollection of how we had started it as a communications committee, a council communications committee, and that's how we got it hooked on the calendar, and now we are here in our first joint school board, town council communications meeting. So we're, I'm, I'm not opposed to having, you know, both council and board of that. Uh, and I see the, and understand the concerns about it maybe being too mu- Uh, and I see the, and understand the concerns about it maybe being too much or, you know, uh, being predominated by other, other budget talk. Or being just generally busy season between now and when the budget's voted. So I'm, I'd like to hear what others have to say about that. You could run, you could run with just council meetings and then have those, you know, the school board, uh, come into it after the budget season is done. I, I, you know, cause I'm, I'm sensitive to the point you've made about the restrictions, uh, you have around, uh, you know, talking about specifics. And, and even in our, in our budget, budget meeting or in our communications meetings, you know, not being able to get into a lot of detail in the budget.
I mean, that is a concern, but honestly, my bigger concern is that I don't want these tangled.
Yeah.
Because the budget outreach, I thought, you know, it was only been one year that we've done it.
Yeah.
I felt like it was, I liked, I liked doing it, I thought it was successful, we're doing it again, I don't really wanna step on those toes to, for lack of a better.
Yeah.
Word, and what April said, I mean, people are, you know, it's like, you ask them to go to the budget outreach and the town council meeting and the school board meeting. And it's like, here's one more thing and I don't know, I, I'm kinda sticking with.
I think we're overestimating the amount of people that might wanna talk about the budget.
Yeah.
That's entirely possible. Maybe.
I mean, because, because our world right now around the table might revolve around the budget?
Yeah.
That doesn't mean everybody else's towns world is revolve around the budget. Um, and so just to push back some more, then we're looking at a six month period at the beginning of the year that we have not done one of these things. These, to me, these are successful if they're consistent.
And you actually just, I always try and bring myself back to this lately, which is, I don't want us as elected officials to dictate. Our decisions around what we think the community wants, like let's, let them tell us.
Let them tell us.
Yeah.
And then, and, and this is what tends to happen, is that we, we then say, you know, we get going down a path and we say, oh, you know, well, we'll do this and we'll do this. And the constituents will like it and, you know, we'll do this, and it's like, well, wait a minute, you guys, go all the way back, we gotta pull back again. Because we're making a lot of assumptions about what people wanna talk about even, and there's no need to do that.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep, the success in this is in the rollout.
Yep, I definitely, I firmly believe that.
So you mentioned that they're already on the calendar.
Yeah.
Just your personal calendars or have they been?
No, they've, I believe they've been sent, uh, the invitations actually have been sent to everybody around this table, I could be wrong, so that wasn't meant to be accusatory, so you can.
Uh, I think just to us, just to town council.
Yeah, I lied, it's just, it's just us, it's the three of us.
We don't, we don't have it.
Yeah, we have. But that means chambers has been booked.
Yeah, everything's been booked, everything's been set, correct.
Right, okay.
So I'd kinda like to hear from Julie and Tom about this, only because you guys are doing the outreach and. How would you feel if we did it at the same time? Do you have an opinion on that?
If people wanna talk about the budget, I think your purpose is served, I mean, that's, that's what this is all about, is engaging them at the level and the topics that they wanna talk about. So I, I don't see the harm in that. Uh, and someone stated earlier, uh, you can't communicate enough, you can't give enough opportunities. And the irony is we might be criticized, uh, for having too many opportunities. I mean, that's one of the frustrating things about this is, uh, we do a darn lot and there's a lot of opportunities for people to be engaged.
You don't communicate enough, you communicate too much.
Uh, so I, I think it's important we have these conversations and provide the opportunities and I don't think it's a bad thing if budget is what's on their mind, let's.
Yeah, right.
That's what we should talk about.
Okay, I'm overwhelmed.
And I would just echo both what Sarah and April are saying, it, I think it is all in how you roll it out and just marketing it. And making it something that people find value in, um, see instant value in. And so being really clear about what you're doing, when you're doing it, why you're doing it. And I would say put all four dates and, you know, kind of like challenging the community, can you come to at least one of these sessions? You're well, you know, you're invited to all of them, but maybe come to one at least, uh, as a way to stay engaged or something like that in your, in your marketing plan. One of the things I've heard from folks, I don't know if they all are intended to be from six to eight, but some of our seniors in town don't like to drive at night.
Yeah.
And although in the summer months, it stays lighter longer, I've been asked about like Saturdays at ten before, um, by some older folks that would prefer that. As opposed to later in the evening.
We did talk about that, but I don't know.
And depending on who's attending each session, like April and I are usually available during the day as opposed to at night anyway, I mean, we could offer it during the day too. Sorry to speak for you, but.
No, that's okay.
Our schedules are.
I think it's a good idea, I think I'll email Larissa and see if we can get one of these guys on Saturday morning.
At least one of them to be fun at night.
Paul, where do you have the dates, do you have those?
Yeah, I have my, I'll, you know, I'll form that, yeah.
Is there any consideration for doing outside of chambers?
Yeah, we did talk about that too.
Um, but I don't know if she actually looked at other.
They're all on a Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, June twenty-fifth, September twenty-fourth, and November nineteenth.
What about the?
And at this point, all scheduled it in council chambers, but I would welcome that idea.
So, we had that meeting before the board, um, I mean, before the election at Wentworth Commons, I felt like a lot more comfortable. It was just a more comfortable atmosphere, I don't know if that's an option.
Yeah, I mean, or even, even like upstairs at Nonsense Brewery.
We can't do that, I just found out we're not allowed.
I'm super comfortable there.
Why? If it's a school function, we can't be where they're serving alcohol. Oh, am I right? I don't, I, I just heard that. I was kinda like.
It's a restaurant.
That can be the, uh, pre. It's like a pre, a pre.
See us later.
Over here.
Or can, or like Scarborough, or.
Just get the string cord tied back.
Well, I feel like we have to be careful that we have it in someplace that allows for as many people to come as possible, like excessive.
I think it's. Like you, we could check, we could look at Martin's Point, see if there's availability there for any of these.
K- kitchen, yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't think it's a bad idea to just fix.
The, the fire, Dunston Fire Station has the.
I mean, we could do for.
It just feels less formal, right, which is what.
That's what, that's what I'm going, that's, that's what, that's what the head do, yeah.
When, when the senior program has the bus that drives them around, is that something we could, like if we had it at an earlier time, could we provide transportation?
You mean like the regional transportation?
Like if we had it at Martin's Point, like could we somehow piggyback on the fact that that bus already drives people to Martin's Point?
I don't know what the pickup.
I don't have ideas for that.
I don't know if the location of the meeting matters, I mean, we have the bus, uh, it's just a matter of logistics and paying a driver to pick them up. You don't have to sign up for it, it's, it's possible.
But I think making sure that you connect with other community groups, cause some of the community organizations have.
Have their own bus, yeah.
Own the transportation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let, let them know.
Yeah, paper shores, if there's enough of the residents that wanna go to a certain location, they'll certainly send a bus.
Does one of us wanna reach out to some places like Martin's Point or Camp Ketchum, have to reach out to some, some dates?
Larissa had a venues list, I think, that's something that, right, in our last meeting, remember she had, and everyone wanted to have, uh, meetings at the clubhouse and pounce back in the summer.
Oh, that's right.
That's not noticing me.
It was on the list.
Yeah.
That sounds free.
Oh, FYI, has to be free.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, these were all.
We know that, yeah, no, it was, that's right.
Well, from what Katie says, we should be thinking of, of venue needs to handle as many as fifty people that has adequate.
Yeah, I'd be fact if we get more than that, but I would.
Your options end up being fairly limited once you start thinking of just the sheer practicality of the location.
Yeah. Right, making, yeah, I mean, I think Martin's Point would be one good option, um. Cause they have that big, that big room.
Would Camp Ketcha donate, do you know?
No.
I don't think so, I think they would charge.
Which has your old classmate from this?
And Wentworth?
I could ask her, yeah.
Learning Commons, is that a good idea?
Yeah, that's a great space.
So what about Wentworth, their Learning Commons?
Let's find out if they're, yeah, that would work for one.
The library has a space that can accommodate a fairly large crowd.
That's true.
So are we exploring tweaking the dates?
No.
So is a change of venue gonna trump the dates or are we just going to work within the current framework?
No, I think if we can find a different venue for each date, let's go for it, and if we end up here for one or more, then it is what it is.
Okay.
Let's keep the first one here, just because that's the, the nearest and the easiest to start, yeah. And then start working on some alternatives for the others.
And are we tweaking a date to include a Saturday or is that off the table as well?
I don't mind tweaking it to, to include a Saturday, but we can also include daytime hours on the weekday if that.
Yeah, or either one, so.
I guess if you're gonna choose a Saturday, would, I would choose which one's darker earlier, was it March or November?
November, probably.
Oh, right, definitely, yeah.
Let us shoot for, um, some probably has a calendar, but the Saturday around the nineteenth?
Of November, yeah, okay.
Before or after?
Why don't we make that one, we'll reach out to Martin's Point and see.
Saturday about.
Yeah.
And that would be like ten to, uh, ten to two, or ten to twelve?
Ten to twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you, are you gonna reach out to them then, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll reach out to them via Tom, Tom will take care of that.
Okay.
So we'll do the other three here, is that right? Other three here?
First one here.
Yeah.
Want any explorers?
Second and third, um, somebody's exploring Wentworth Library.
Who's somebody?
I don't know.
Okay, I just, I always call that up.
Call.
Yeah, should I just email the superintendent?
Um.
All right, email Julie.
Julie, can you? See, can you look into Wentworth for the?
September?
Yes, no, not September, is there one in September?
June twenty-fifth.
Yeah. I just, June twenty-fifth might be busy with, there's one.
No, I wouldn't do June. Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Community services camp and stuff, so the September one's probably easier.
Okay, so September twenty-fourth. Wentworth, question.
Okay.
The first one's here, second one's Wentworth, third one.
Second one's not Wentworth.
So library, June is, is June one?
Yeah, I would say let's do the June one at the library.
Library, if possible, and like I said, if not, fine, we'll just.
Who's gonna, who's reaching out?
All right, well, I'll take the, the second and fourth.
Okay.
So the library and the, and Martin's Point.
And Julie you're gonna ask about, okay.
Great.
And then we already have this booked for.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, um, and then Paul, back to what you were saying about who attends these, do we wanna get into that now?
Yep, yep. Yeah, so I think for backend reasons or reasons of, of elected officials' times and consistency. My idea would be to keep it, unless a, a different member of the V O E and or the town council said, hey, I would really like to get in on some of that action. Then I think we should keep it to the, the, uh, members of these committees, uh, for scheduling purposes and for consistency purposes. And if we are gonna, as Tom says, what are we gonna do with it, what are we gonna do with it? I think it's easy to answer, easier to answer the question, what are we gonna do with these experiences if, if it's within the committees? But just to reiterate, my one caveat to that would be, make it very well known to the other board and council members, say, hey, this is what we're doing, would you like to participate?
I was just gonna say that, and that's how we did, I mean, we didn't have any expectation that other counselors came to help facilitate, but they were always invited.
Right. Right.
And they often did come, I, you know, the only piece I would add to that is that then as the facilitators, um, being really careful and mindful. That we're, we're watching the airtime, because again, I feel like as council members and as board members, we get our airtime. And it really needs to be about citizens and not having a bunch of counselors show up and then, and taking all that.
Oh, yeah.
Not enough oxygen in the room for that.
So speaking for myself, I, I would agree, I think it would be better for us as a board, um, as the school board to do it at the community le- I mean, at the committee level.
Um, so I don't have a problem with that, I think there needs to be the expectation from us, I, I assume for you guys too, but just between us.
And then invite the rest of the board to attend.
Whenever those notes come out, like we, we say, um, here's the notes from the session to the rest of the board, just so that they know, like. Because there could be stuff that touches their committees too.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I will say, one of the reasons to keep it at the committee level would be because it's harder to have someone facilitate a meeting that they haven't had to develop. And so if we're sitting here kind of setting the expectations and developing, you know, how the meeting is gonna go. Like that would need to be communicated to someone who was gonna facilitate if it wasn't one of us.
And don't you also have, uh, standing committee report outs in your meetings, so when there's a, a higher, a meeting process for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think, to your point, if somebody came to us and we're like, we, I'd really like to attend a meeting, I think it would be okay if they were the second person. I mean, because are we planning on sending two members of the school board and two members of town council to each meeting?
Yep.
I think that'd be ideal, but I also don't wanna overburden this group either, I mean.
Yeah.
As long as we have one and one every time, and then two would be better.
Well, it's like, three times a year.
Well, so to Julie's.
I mean, I'll probably go to all of them, but that's just, I have no life.
And Julie, you can correct me.
I wanna go to these, right?
Because this comes up like fairly frequently, I feel like for the school board, cause we're still trying to figure out what the rules are. And as long as it's in public and we're not making any decisions, it's okay for more than three board members to be in any one place.
Right, you can be in the same space, you just can't be conducting business or having conversations about business. So if you're listening to the community, there's no, you're not violating any.
That's such a fine line though, cause if we're discuss, if we're having these discussions with the community and there's four of us in the room, technically we're all discussing it.
So long as the meeting is noticed.
But you're not making any decisions, we're not voting on anything.
If the meeting, the public's aware that the, that the meeting's happening, that's really the big, the most important part.
Meeting's happening.
And then you all have to behave yourselves that you don't get into the debating.
Right, you and I should not be having a private discussion with two other board members about something that's being said, which.
And, and just avoid things like, so if this were on an agenda, how would you feel about that, like those types of conversations?
But sometimes, and.
Whatever, that I would force the board members, not the talk.
As much as it may be okay, sometimes the perception of it is not okay, so we, I think we need to be careful from our end.
I disagree, I think we're okay.
No, I hear your concern, and I think it's, it's very valid, I've been in a place where there's, you know, a football game and there's four of us at a football game and, you know. But absolutely no conversation, just because we all happen to wanna go to the same event in town.
Well, see, that to me is different, that's not a sponsored event that's being, like, we're all, it, it would be weird to me. If I were at a football game and I looked across the bleachers and there were four town counselors all sitting on the same bleacher together, like. Even if you were talking about popcorn and soda and football, it, that, that to me is where you run into perception problems. When you're in a room that's designed to.
Chambers.
Chambers, which is literally designed to, you know, be open to elected officials and constituents mingling together. At, the perception, it's like you said, obviously we're discussing issues in the community, that's what people expect us to be talking about. It would be a problem if then the four of us were like sitting behind the desk, like, like obviously, so we would avoid that at all costs.
Remember, the purpose of this is to hear from the constituents, so you shouldn't be dominating the conversation against my board.
Right, not to be discussing, exactly, and that was, right, so let's talk about it.
Bingo, okay.
Okay.
Um, okay. So we have like, well, um, okay, am I forgetting, am I forgetting anything about these meetings?
Roll out.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, that's big.
Just one housekeeping thing, if you want us to send a doodle poll around, so folks can sign up for one of these four dates once we lock them down, just so you can get it on your calendars.
Sure. Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. Yes.
You're so tech savvy.
I said we, I didn't say me.
Okay, so I feel like, um. We can do the rigmarole and put it on our social media, we can put it on our website, you guys can put it on your social media, you can put it on your website. Um, I am happy to create or jointly create a flyer that we can put, um, at the library, uh, I don't know, what else are you guys thinking? But, oh, sorry, my whole point in saying that, sorry, Sarah, is that I think we need to come up with what we wanna call it. And, and have any of our pictures or, um, images that we're using to go along with it be completely consistent between the two groups.
Okay, sorry, I was just gonna say, forget the channels for a second, maybe the, the what? I mean, so we agree on like what we're saying and then we can blast it everywhere, um, but, and I, I meant, so we're calling it what?
Oh, I have no idea, I just know we're not calling it the Sabbath.
Quarterly community. Okay, so first things first, we need a name.
The last version was constituent meetings.
I like roundtables.
Yeah.
Yeah. Quarterly roundtables.
Quarterly, community roundtables?
Oh, come on, that's such a mouthful.
Quarterly, community, quarterly, community round, perfect.
No, no.
What about just community roundtables and in the description, we say, we, they'll be held quarterly?
That they're quarterly?
You're such a problem.
This is where the fun committee work starts right now, we're just for the next twenty minutes talking about the name of something.
Talking about what.
Right, but this is important.
It is important.
It is.
I really.
I think that they, I think the word quarterly should be in the title to reemphasize that they're going to be quarterly.
That they are reoccurring.
Yes.
Right, that they're reoccurring.
I think that there's something to that.
So let's go with reoccurring quarterly.
So I wasn't resting a hundred percent on board on quarterly, just so you know, I was like more like, like around energy, but that's me.
What if we said roundtables? What if we said roundtables?
If there's more than one.
They're just gonna expect many tables when they show up. That's not gonna work. These tables aren't wrong.
I am all for either making something long enough that could have an acronym or short enough that we don't have to spit it out.
I would like, I would like shorter as opposed to acronym. I think we live in.
So then it's community roundtable.
Okay.
Held quarterly.
Subtitle, held quarterly.
Simple. Held quarterly and then the couple of goals.
Well, I do think that, um, but actually Paul, though, I do think Julie has a really good.
Earlier, I'm fine.
I think Julie had a really good point, like whatever graphic we choose, it should be community roundtable and then we should have the four dates listed.
No, totally agree.
All four of them, um, on the, on whatever flyer we come up with. So that kind of speaks to the ongoing nature of them, if we have more than one date.
Julie's prayer thought was kind of issuing a challenge, you know, make the effort to attend at least one, mark, mark your calendar, kinda thing.
What did you call it? A prayer march? What did you decide?
Where did, I thought we were allowed to talk about prayers.
Prior thought?
Prior thought, oh.
Definitely not prayer march.
Fire talk at the.
My eyes. Didn't hear that.
It's the new jargon.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, can we come up with like, so I, I liked, you know, in terms of, and we, there seemed to be some consensus around what the goals are, so just a few kind of taglines or or bullets, if you will, around what those goals are that we can all agree on. So I think it was building stronger community was something I heard Julie say that I really liked. Um, engage, uh, citizen engagement and involvement, something along that. I like involve, better than even then engage.
Better than engage?
Yep, I do too.
All, so community roundtable, all dates, we want, um, the goals. Can you say them again? In community, um.
Building stronger community.
Building stronger community.
Building a stronger community, one roundtable at a time.
I like that.
Quarterly, quarterly, one quarterly roundtable at a time.
See you in the quarter. See, the branding's already working, guys.
What if it had like, this isn't it, but some sort of logo that had the months, 'cause that wouldn't change every year.
Right.
Yeah.
And so then people would just be solidified. I know it always happens March, June, September, November.
Yeah.
But, yeah, something cooler than that.
Wait, what was the second one we wanted to use?
Um.
Something involve or engage.
Yes.
Building a stronger community.
Looking for an action word, right?
No, I am looking for an action word. Increase citizen involvement, no.
I'm always a fan of compassion, empathy, sense of feeling.
Do you wanna do something around dialogue? Connectedness. Someone said earlier, two-way dialogue.
No.
Engage.
Take that.
We have building.
I'll take his credit.
Building a stronger community.
Or something that goes with building.
I mean, can we, can we flush this out, do that now or can we flush this out like within the next few days? Can that be an objective?
We can, everybody, everybody email me their verb. But yes, I think so.
Involvement, you've involved.
I have, building a stronger community and then something, some sort of involvement.
Okay. As long as we have that up, good.
I think Hillary, the other thing we might wanna consider adding, at least in the first one, is uh, like an asterisk of, just to differentiate it from all the other things that are happening, so people know this is not another listen to learn session. This is not, yeah, this is new, this is a new initiative.
Yeah.
Um, just by the elected officials.
And that's, that is a good way to actually distinguish it here, is to make it to somehow tie in that it is really just the elected officials here. Hosted by. Yeah, hosted by.
Hosted by.
Hosted by the school board and town council, that would be probably a good way to brand it, so it clearly says, you know.
Yeah.
Or town council.
I like the word hosted. Hosted by V O E. J C. Um, I do like the idea of coming up with some sort of image.
I like something with fours, like four-leaf clover or something that has.
That, like, do, I mean, just on the top of the agenda, I, I, I don't know if you guys use this or not, but I grabbed it from your website. Sorry, I have the, the school board thing and then the town thing. I mean, we could do something like that.
Yep.
Yep, yep, I think that's good. Like, we were talking about consistent branding. So, what do you call that? I, I said orange, but I meant town.
I was gonna say, we're gonna. Everyone's gonna want us to do it. Yeah. And we have some.
The, with the, um. The reeds, the marshes.
That's the unofficial one, that was the free.
Cat and tail. Is this the old one or is that?
That is the official one.
Spill it.
C A D.
A N D.
This is the official.
Oh, you guys, this is the official one, the circle thing.
What's this one then?
That's the unofficial one.
Yeah.
I mean, it's on all the signs.
One that's on every sign.
It's the unofficial one that Card Mart says we need in everything we do for branding.
I think that one is way better.
It's part of our branding, but this is the official logo as adopted by the government town council.
Yeah.
That's really more for marketing purposes.
Well, marketing and branding. I would use that one.
Well, we, we have a very specific color scheme that we should be using, and you guys do too, so I almost like the official one, 'cause it doesn't, it's black and white, so we're not getting a whole.
It doesn't.
We're not bonding.
Doesn't clash with Scarborough's red and black.
Right.
Well, we have, um, we have a variety of different versions of this.
We should have one.
The red, black and white is pretty good.
We have a gray.
The S. We have a school.
I wanna leave it to Hillary to make those.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hillary, I have these things. I have all the logos, Hillary, for you doing that.
Okay, well, actually, I don't, I have all the town one, I mean, I have all the school ones, so just send them to town.
Drive.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I have, I have either in the drive or on my computer from. Okay, so I'll try and put together, um, like, the flyer and then from there, once we all tweak it and agree on what we want it to look like, from there, we can make some like memes and images for social media.
Okay, can we talk about dissemination too, in terms of not just.
Hand them out to everybody that attends a town council meeting.
So we're gonna create a physical flyer, you know.
So we're doing. Physical.
Press release.
Yeah, we could do a press release.
I would like to make a TV commercial on channel three.
Actually.
I would, I, I'm so frustrated, that has been on my, the top of my brain for the last seven days.
They don't do it?
It's, I need to.
Uh, we're shooting one. It's very soon, let's do it.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this, you're serious?
Yes.
Why not? Heck yeah.
It's key to watch the slides go by that are advertising harvest dinner when we have like actual news that we could be posting to these. And we just, it's not a medium that we have been in the habit of using and we need to get back in the habit.
We, we did, one of the video, one of the, um, kid last year won the video contest, we gave that to them and they were supposed to play it, but why don't we give them this, this is irrelevant to this meeting, but why don't we give them this?
Well, wait.
No, but I mean, it's, it's relevant in that we should be giving, like, we should be using the Scarborough channel more.
They will, they need content.
Right, if we give it to them, I assume that.
I challenge you all to produce content.
Okay.
Action item number two.
New idea.
Action item number two.
Can't be filmed on my phone.
Yeah, well.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I don't, you have to check with Michael Hoffmeyer.
There's a specific format they need, sorry, for videos, for the, because.
We did Inside Scarborough Public Schools on YouTube, he couldn't play them.
And when I did the, when the video, the two kids who won the video contest, one of them could be played and one of them couldn't. So there is, you, we would have to check.
Those are questions, logistics.
Maybe invite him to a meeting.
No, we do have cameras that we loan out, so those certainly produce acceptable video.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't know that. Okay, so we have the physical flyer, the press release, the Scarborough Public Television, social media.
I will volunteer to look into this Scarborough Public Television piece.
I will volunteer to be in the commercial.
Okay.
I'll be in the commercial too.
Yeah, me too. I, I'll, let me find out how to get your pretty faces on TV.
Get a shape.
Can we do a rap?
You write it, I'll, I'll say whatever you.
Alright, I am from Detroit, I can do this.
Okay, so April is doing that.
Because there's a few other things that I had wanted to get on the Scarborough Channel too. School board stuff, so.
Um, is there anything else?
Can we look at it immediately? What's that, next Monday?
I feel like it's a warning.
I don't know, we have, they always end up getting canceled.
That's true.
But maybe now that you're on them, they won't, but I have it for five fifteen next Monday.
I'm in New Orleans. So, but I'll reach out to Ben.
Okay.
And, okay.
There you are, boom.
Guys.
On TV.
What is that?
Is this something that we can send in Friday folders? Uh, is this something that they can put, um, you know? Oh, what about, um, the leader, the things to do?
Yeah. Um, and when is the next, uh, e-newsletter?
Every two weeks.
Right, so we can get.
Yeah, what is the?
Yes, I was just gonna ask.
I was, I put the March calendar here so that I could kinda get a rough idea of when we started to.
School board.
What do you guys think this needs to be rolled out?
Working backwards from the first date.
Yeah, which is Tuesday, the twenty sixth.
I think right after school vacation would be a good time to start.
Okay.
And that gives us time to flush out some of the details of the marketing.
Okay, so I'll try and do a flyer by mid-school vacation. Um, so that we can break it apart into pieces, basically for all our other stuff. School board newsletter, um. Oh, I was just gonna say, what about, um, dates in the school newsletter, uh, school emails?
So we, we have like a community board, so if you guys make a flyer, we can post it on the community board.
Okay.
That's what we do typically with anything that comes to us from other folks. Oh, also, we can also share it with the principals and ask them to put reminders in there. Um, they each kinda do it differently.
Then newsletter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll do actual hard flyers, like here.
Library, yeah. I was just gonna do like, are you picturing like just one page?
Yeah, one sheet.
Yeah, me too, okay. Um, okay, and then we only have a few minutes left, like, like, I don't know. Four minutes, but, um, I just had on here and, and maybe this is jumping the gun a little bit, but, um, I wanted to talk about if there are any other ideas or things that we can accomplish as, as a joint communications team other than the roundtables. Like, for instance, we have our superintendent search. I mean, this, actually, this is very specific, but we have our superintendent search forum tonight and we have a survey that the community members can fill out, and I had emailed Larissa earlier, um, asking if they could cross-reference that information on the town website because we're trying to get it out to a wider audience and just parents and teachers. Um, that's a super specific example, but, um, I don't know if there's other things that are along that vein, that we can kind of coordinate our efforts on.
Maybe an a- an agenda item for next meetings, we can share what our timeline is for the budget communications that we have.
Yeah.
And try and get those aligned, if you guys have any, I don't know, if you have any thoughts or comments for budget outreach and communications.
We haven't discussed as many.
Right.
Yep.
If we have a timeline.
Yeah, we're working on a timeline, like same thing, working backwards from the vote as to what we wanna get out and when. Um, for the school portion, I don't, I don't know if that is on your agenda as something that you guys do on, as a part of your committee or not.
It has not been.
We even talked about it as communications.
And it hasn't historically, I mean, the communications committee on the town council has only been in existence two years. So two years ago, it was the first year, last year, year two, so this is year three. And it has, so the last two years, it has not been a part, although in year one, we talked about it, that being an important part of it, um, but we would just have gotten, that was the first year of getting things up and running, and then last year it was not, so it could be.
Okay.
Okay.
I think even just thinking about that, opportunities to.
Let's just talk about it.
You know, cross.
Yeah, well, we're, we're on our agenda for this, for our.
Do it some more.
Yeah.
I mean, I think in general, the, do you guys do the liaison?
Hmm?
Do you guys do the liaison?
Yes, I am officially the liaison to town council.
So I think in general, I mean, obviously this is, our committee's working together, but just the optics of having now, there's a liaison to the town council from the school board, um, I think just the, being, anytime we can present ourselves together when it's appropriate is important. Um, so I, I feel like that separate of the communication committees, there's also efforts in other areas to work towards that. The liaison being one of them, trying to make it a point to, to speak at my, um, at my committee updates, I try to make this point. Always bring something to the table for the V O E, but that's not at the committee level, so to speak, but I, I feel like there's other efforts that aren't just here at this table.
Right, and I have so, something that I, we talked about two years ago and then last year it kind of died on the vine, but I would love to talk more about it if. I mean, I think this is great, I think just having us sitting at the table together, not talking about budget pieces, but talking about how we engage our, our community is, is huge. And, uh, sends a very different message from what people have seen in the past. And so like one thing that I've always tried and wanted to, Tom, you can attest, 'cause I mentioned Dunk Tank several times for, um, Summer Fest and town counselors, and I'd be happy, but i- if it's not the Dunk Tank, it's doing something fun.
I'll do, I'll do something else.
See, I would do a Dunk Tank too, but doing something fun.
Very long lines.
Something fun and visible as a, as, as, as together, and not just these two committees, but the full boards um, at Summer Fest, I think is a important message.
I think it's important, I was thinking about this earlier too, when we were talking about how we, I mean, how we attract people to a roundtable, how we attract people to come and talk to us quarterly, and what that means for the constituents is something, you know, that I think is, I don't, I don't wanna assume what that means, like, but I think being approachable and, you know, having a little fun is, is certainly.
It draws people, it draws people in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about when there's different things happening in the community, can you all endorse it, like, when it's, um, like when they clean up the Eastern Trail or clean up the Marsh or other various things that are happening in the community that we all benefit from? You guys can sort of endorse that.
Yeah, Project Gris is.
I think that's a great.
The field rally, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a great point. Look for opportunities to co-celebrate something.
Endorse each other.
The other thing that I, I did the first year very intentionally was, um, I mean, you, you, you start to know uh, just based on different meetings and different topics, different, you know, where different viewpoints are coming from. And I did a personal imitation to those people, because there were certain people, I wanted them to sit across the table from a different person and meet and look each other in the eye and get to know each other, so we here all have a very different sphere of influence that we can bring and I can easily guilt my friends into at least a few little, and connections into coming to a few things, and I, um, I think that's a powerful piece too, is just, look, I could use your help, could, you know, again, to Julie's point, you know, would you be willing to commit to trying to attend at least one of these sessions? Um, and be thoughtful, I like, don't just invite the B F Fs, but also just, I was very intentional about, you know, trying to different geography in Scarborough, different demographics, all of those pieces, so.
Okay, this was so, I, I'm really happy we did this, so thank you everyone for coming and engaging, and I think it's gonna be really great to do some of these, I, I, I mean, just speaking personally, we did the budget outreach and I did some of the listen to learns, and I, I find it very valuable to go out and just be approachable and talk to people face to face, so, so hopefully we can, you know, continue with that and, and broaden it by doing this together.
Great.
Great. Thank you. So, thank you everyone.
Thanks, Ari. Want to take a couple comments, we've had a member of the public sitting here.
Oh, are we supposed to do that?
In, in the spirit of being approachable.
Yes!
Comes to the table.
Would you like to sit at the table?
Just observing. I, uh, it's not something I thought about very much. Um, I can give you a comment though.
So. Step up here.
See, now that makes it too official.
Name an age, please.
It's good that you're looking to reach out and engage the community. I, I don't know that you need to do that through the communication. You should do, but you can also do that on your own.
And then there's no conflict, like, if you have a question about how people feel about a topic that's coming up, you can put it on your own social media, or you can reach out to constituents. I don't see a lot of that happening, in some other towns, you see it happening more frequently, so that's just, I guess, my thought, other than that, it's great that you guys are.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
That's a good point.
I just, one other thing that, this is kinda like.
I don't think we're, like, encouraged to do that in one year.
Sorry. Um, remember how I talked to you about the thought exchange?
Yeah.
So, today at the regional service center that we're not officially a part of yet meeting, um, we, GORM is using it because they have, they used it for their building project, and also 'cause they're looking at start times, and so, they have, um, their thought exchange is willing to offer us like a consortium rate, if that's something that the town of Scarborough is interested in, through that group.
GORM is using that?
They're using thought exchange, yeah. Yeah, they didn't buy the full one-year subscription, they just are test, kind of test driving it for one.
Have you talked to the GORM super about holding out until we can try to negotiate a good deal together, or is that not the way it works?
No, we're gonna try to negotiate a good deal together with all of us, but I wasn't sure if that's something that maybe as joint communications you would be interested in or not, um, because they're going to schedule kind of like a product pitch, and maybe one or more of you would wanna come to that and hear it firsthand.
Yes.
Okay.
Especially if we can, mm, share services.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Would we have to be a part of the, the regional service center?
Well, right now, we are, you know, there's.
We're honorary members.
We're best, we're, we're out of the.
We're honorary, yes.
Um, but in terms of the rate, I think they're gonna offer it, just because their, GORM was the first one in Maine to, to use the product, and so, that's how we're kind of bringing that and one other product into Maine, so, trying to use our, our leverage in that way.
We are still on there. I, do you have a minute, 'cause I have a separate question for you.
Are you going up to the high school?
I have a findage now, which is why I'm stuffing my face with some peanuts and chocolate chips, because I, this is my dinner.
I was always been the.
Was supposed to be co-chairing this, but he had another obligation with the state, um, so he had missed Peter's offer to fill in as co-chair, um, but also, just given this is my first time doing the joint finance committee, appreciate any support from anybody else, uh, Kate, Julie, Tom, you guys have been around.
I've been around a lot, few times.
Doing this before, so I appreciate that support. Um, you all have the, the agendas in, in front of you, uh, I believe, just have somebody else coming. Johnny, you mind sharing? Just so you can copy.
We have a nice stack, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, just the, the purpose of this is really mostly a scene setting, um, for the rest of these sessions, uh, so just go over norms, objectives, and goals, um, you know, what, what that means in terms of what our role and responsibilities are, um, and then we've asked Tom and Julie to give us a debrief of so, uh, some of the sessions that they've been holding, so the listen to learn sessions. We'll talk through the budget drivers for FY twenty, um, review the schedule, which, um, Kate has printed out, I also have some milestone highlights on the slides, um, and then just plan for our next meeting as well. Um, do you have Peter or Pete?
Peter.
Peter, okay.
Either's fine.
Um, Peter has asked, uh, that we add another agenda item as well, which is, um, would you call it?
At least just, uh, maybe some conversation on budget targets.
Budget targets.
Yes, 'cause I know that, that's sort of in process right now, so.
So if we have time, there is the community forum happening right now, so I would like to get us out of here, right on time, if not, a minute or two before, so for those who would like to get up to the end of that session, we can, um,
Superintendent.
The superintendent search forum. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and progress to the joint committee norms, um, to, Peter, this is where I might be, um, defer to you, but these were the norms that were set um, a few years ago in two thousand fifteen, um, they were reaffirmed two thousand seventeen. Um, so I think really it's up for us just to decide, do we agree with them, uh, do we wanna keep them, if there's anything we wanna change or add to the.
Yeah, we started for a couple of years with goals, oh, sorry, with norms, so that we, you know, established our relationship as a team, and then, um, last year, we thought it would be a cool idea to throw some goals in there, just wanted, that was a, an enhancement to the process.
Sort of a work in, work in progress, right?
Well, it's been a little bit different each year, which is a good sign.
It's a new cast of characters, so it may change.
So, maybe Peter, I don't know, based on your experience, do you wanna talk through, are there any on there that you think should be removed, or do you think, based on how it's gone in the past, this is a reasonable starting place?
I mean, I. Hi, excuse me, we're gonna send you off, Peter.
Yeah.
You want to buzz one?
No, I think it's good, I think, um, no, I mean, I kinda leave it to sort of the new members of, of the team to kind of look at this and see if it works. These seem to have worked for us in the past, and I think as I go down through them, you know, one of the things we first tried to do when we came together is just to really open up communication, so hopefully, this is a safe place where we can talk about the issues in front of us, so, you know, the first one was really about just being open and no hidden agendas, and talk about what we wanna talk about. You know, I think in the past, and it's sort of a microcosm of the world right now, but it's also a microcosm of, you know, the conversations we've had in the past, but how can we treat each other with dignity and respect? Just kind of have civil conversations and exchange of ideas and, and, and those types of things, I think that helped us kind of guide us through some conversations. We really tried, it's really hard, we tried to really practice just listening first, make sure we hear everybody's voice, go around the table, these are things that kind of had worked for us. You know, I think the history was in the past, relationships hadn't, we, that, was this, was two thousand, when was the first year we kinda did the joint meetings?
Twenty fourteen, fifteen was the first time we came together, yeah.
So, prior to that, the, the relationship had been, you know, we really didn't, we kind of talked past each other, we really didn't sit down and have conversations, so that's why this is on here. Um, we, you know, we do understand we're two different bodies, and we have different governance and different ways that we conduct business, so just, this was just really make sure we respect those, those different processes that we have, both as a town council and as Board of Education. And most importantly, just bring a sense of humor, okay, as we started the meeting with, just kind of, it started having some laughter and some lightness is important. And again, I think the ones that we added last year was really around, how do we communicate effectively, I mean, so much of what we do is communications, so how do we make sure we can communicate effectively, so then we can communicate out to everybody else effectively? And then, you know, I think, I, it added, and I, and I don't know if, you know, Kate, whether you added this, but I think last year, we added. you added this, but I think last year, we added, in the past, we kind of met, but maybe never had specific takeaways and to-dos. And so that's why this was added, to make sure at the end of each meeting, everybody's clear about what will be ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, we put that on last year on the agenda as just sort of a reminder that, you know, as we walk away, we want to be thoughtful about what we've committed to.
But again, this is a working document. So for all of you that are joining us, if this is great, but I think this is a time, if anybody else has anything else they think we should add, this would be a great time to talk about that.
I think it's good to start. One of the things that I think we have established, so April and I are also on the Communications Committee, which we just met with these guys beforehand in the joint session. So I think that'll be really helpful in terms of your last point, which is communicating with each other, but also making sure we're still aligned. So making sure, I guess, you know, a specific action from these meetings would always be for us to kind of circle back with the communications and everything.
Geez, Don, usually you have something to...
Yeah, no, I'd begin by trying to seem transparent and listening first. It's a new thing for me. One thing I would say, though, is I think maybe we'll get into this when we talk about budget targets, but I'm fine with the process goals in terms of developing the budget. It's sure, you're fine. And I look forward to it. Thanks.
Doesn't kind of get any animus? Everybody's okay? Great?
That goes for the committee goals as well.
So we're agreed that we'll move forward with what we have here, and we could always revisit if something arises.
Yep.
That's great.
So I think the next item was for, it was just for Julie and Tom, but share your read-up.
Yeah, we're not collaborating, so I'll start and you could fill in.
Sure.
This year, it wasn't attended quite as well as it was our first year, second year. I did my tally, we had 24 different community members attend one of four sessions. We had a number of folks attend multiple sessions. So I think we had 18 unique attendees. A bit underwhelming, frankly, for the effort put forward. But having said that, I think each and every time, there were meaningful conversations. I think those that attended, I hope, left in a better place, that they had their questions asked. They were small enough groups that were able to really have personal conversations for nearly two hours in all cases. It was interesting, we did try to break up the locations, the time of day. Unfortunately, our first one was kind of a snowy morning, so that might have hurt our attendance. And the one we had midday at the library was pretty sparsely attended, but I think we had four people in it. But again, that might have been the most robust conversation we had, as it turned out. We've really tried to use the opportunity to hear from the community what they like, what they don't like, really to inform us as we start to formulate the budgets. This year, for the first time, I heard very loud and clear in one of the sessions, it was loaded up with Higgins Beach folks. Their civic committee came, five assisted them. And essentially, their message was, we love what you're doing, the sort of effort that you put forth in terms of parking enforcement and the like, we like it, keep it going, which was helpful and meaningful. But honestly, I don't have any other specific takeaway in terms of, from the process. But again, we had productive conversations, I thought, throughout. Julie, I don't know what your impressions were.
I would echo much of what you said last year. It seemed like there were very clear themes for us on the school side. Specifically, it was like word language, you know, expand word language, expand music offerings. I didn't hear that so much this time, but again, there weren't a lot of school, folks with school-aged children who attended any of the sessions collectively. I think we, with the exception of the last session, which was at Wentworth. And that really turned into more of like a robust conversation about a whole variety of things, including...
Mostly school.
Yeah, it was mostly, what, did you feel like it was mostly school?
I thought I earned a master's degree after...
I did get a little, I was a little soapboxy a couple of times talking about various issues, but I think it was more people just processing different priorities and things that are going on than saying like, here's a direct ask or service that I'm looking for. In the first session, there was conversation around like a pool and an ice rink and a community center. And Tom talked about, you know, needing to find partners, or the idea of finding partners to help fund that. And then some other really specific things, like different club offerings and how do we decide what to offer and what not to offer? And so I just made a note that I know one of the things that Athletic Department would like to do is a Title IX student interest survey, so that we can really assess, are we meeting all of our students' needs? And do we have equal access for both genders or all gender identifying students? I'm trying to think if there was anything else really to add to that.
Were these mostly, were they mostly the same voices we usually hear? Or were these really a diverse mix of new voices?
This has been around 10 years, so I've got, you know, a lot of people, I think it was only one new person in that. But not surprisingly, these are folks that are engaged, that care about the community, that have an opinion about things, so.
I had not interacted with the Higgins Beach group in that way before. So that was fun to hear from them, sort of their perspectives about what services are working on.
Did they indicate how they heard about the meetings?
These folks, there's a civic committee of the Higgins Beach Association, so they pride themselves on, you know, understanding what's going on in town. And they made a very concerted effort, again, there were five of them there purposely to send that message. And it was done in a very positive and productive way, mind you. So they're folks that are tuned in to what's going on.
These were advertised on the district's Facebook page, the town's Facebook page, I assume it was part of the district newsletter.
Yeah.
And also on that board down by...
Yeah, Mark Barun's building.
I was going to say mainly Rats, but that's not there anymore.
Were they in the leader?
I don't know if they were in the leader or not.
No, I don't recall.
Did we hit social media on that?
We did, yeah.
One of the things the school department added this year in December was replicating really this community listening sessions, but doing it with our staff. And so Kate and I went out to each of the schools during lunch periods and made ourselves available for anyone who wanted to come in and talk to us about, you know, where they felt supported, where they needed support, what they saw as budget priorities. They could also ask questions about how different things worked. That was very informative and is really, you will see lots of evidence of that staff voice in the budget proposal that we're putting forward.
How well-attended was that?
Very well-attended. We had at Wentworth...
Had a total of 87 people, I think, across the district. And it was different at different schools.
Yeah, each school was a little bit different. Pleasant Hill was our first, and so they were kind of nervous, like, we don't know what to say or ask. So the principal helped get people in there. And then once folks came in the room, it was a really natural conversation. And Kate and I kept notes. And then we synthesized the notes and pulled out the emerging themes that were sort of district-wide. And our promise was to send the, our findings, if you will, to the whole staff before winter break. And we were able to do that. And then the principals have also continued to engage staff in developing proposals for the budget. So typically, I think they would listen to staff or have conversation with staff, and then they would write the proposals, where several of the principals have actually asked staff to help draft those proposals.
Julie, maybe we can share a copy of the summary?
The letter?
Yeah. I don't know if you have the highlights off the top of your head, though. Can you share with us some of the themes?
Well, definitely keeping class sizes down was one of the themes. Teachers wanted to have access to discretionary funds so that they could purchase ancillary items for their classrooms that maybe aren't a part of the bulk order. So we try to bulk order as much as we can so that we can get the biggest, you know, bang for our buck, so to speak. But they felt that not being able to just even a small amount of money to be able to buy the special materials for a specific project that supported the curriculum, that was really very clear at Wentworth, where it seemed like other schools had some sort of structure in place for that. In our primary schools, the increasing demand of the incoming students, the social, emotional and behavioral demands that students have are requiring staff to work in really different ways. And they were inquiring about additional human resources to help support that, which we, you know, I'm always saying like a broken record, how do we ensure we're solving the right problem? Because, you know, more people doesn't necessarily solve the issue. Is it, are we asking too much of our youngest learners? Do we need to look at our curriculum? Do you need, as staff, different training or new training so that you can feel better prepared to deal with these incoming and changing needs? And that's really a story that we're going to see playing out for a number of years. This year, we know our incoming case, we have our highest number of students coming in requiring services than we've ever had, as far back as any current staff can recall. So we know that's going to put additional demands on our K-2 teachers. So trying to hear them and, you know, hear their, there's a lot of stress and anxiety, I would say, across the board. That was a theme that I definitely took away from leaving each conversation, partly because, you know, they get 20 minutes and they're trying to tell us their priorities and eat their lunch and go to the bathroom and do all of that. But also that there's some really big needs in our schools. And we've been, you know, working on this really tight budget for a number of years. And, you know, there's a breaking point, and I think we're at that breaking point. And I think that this is a good year for us to start making some wise, thoughtful, evidence-based incremental investments back into our school programs to help staff feel supported and heard, but also, you know, to better meet the needs of our students. We've kind of kept going as thin as we could with our little discretionary amounts in our budget, and people are starting to feel that.
Yeah, the only other thing I would throw in that we heard from all of the buildings was that we don't have enough substitute teachers. And it's a, it's kind of that same story that you've heard us telling about bus drivers, that there just are not people ready to sign up and come and work with us as subs. So we brainstormed a few interesting ideas about trying to encourage and recruit substitutes. But that was definitely a theme, because people are feeling spread thin, and when someone's out, it just creates that extra little stress. Or, and particularly when we're trying to do professional development during the day or trying to free time for teachers to work together on something, it's just one more little element to that that makes it really difficult.
Yeah.
Quick question, when you said the special needs are the highest, not special needs, but children coming in with higher needs is the highest you've seen. Is that, is that a function of society? Do you think that's a function of people that are moving into our community? Is it, is there a reason why that's...
I have a couple of theories, and none of these are, you know, scientific in any way, but we are in the midst of a booby crisis. And, you know, these children are becoming of age. We know that one in every four babies born in Maine are born drug addicted. And so I'm not making that assumption, you know, I'm not making that direct parallel, but I think that that's certainly something that's been on my mind for the last several years, thinking about the implications of this and what that's going to mean for what public schools are charged with doing. I do also think that we're identifying, you know, children younger and earlier, because we know that early intervention is much more cost efficient and effective than waiting until, until they're older. So I think that's a good thing, that more students are being identified younger. And then, you know, to the social, emotional needs, I think that we're in a place of correction in public education for the last, you know, decade or more. We've really been focusing heavily on accountability and academics and, you know, test scores and paying a lot of mind to, you know, what's the curriculum in terms of the academic instruction, where now we're seeing a big conversation in public education around that social, emotional development and how critical that is. And when you have children coming from two working, you know, working parent households, we can be frustrated that they don't have the skills that are coming, you know, coming to us already with the skills, or we can adapt and adjust. And so I think that we're just seeing that, we've been talking about the whole child for a long time, but we really need to make sure that our behaviors and our expectations then match that, that conversation. So I think it's a lot of things. It's hard to really say. One of the myths that we do often hear is that people come to Scarborough because our special ed services are so good, and they are very good. We offer very comprehensive programming here in our district. But when you look at our percentage of our population identified or classified as special education comparative to other districts in the state, we're actually on the lower end. And so I think that, you know, it's, not every family can just get up and move to a community like Scarborough when their child has specific needs. And so I think that that's probably fewer people than, than folks sometimes think, just given the housing market.
Don, did you get a sense in the conversations, was there anything about process of the budget? Or was it more about people talking about services they want or they didn't, and what they valued? Anything about the process?
I don't recall a single comment on process, frankly. Do you, Julie?
Didn't really ask about the process. I know Larissa did those focus groups around the budget book itself. I think all of you probably have seen that, but...
Yeah, I think I may have addressed it in that we are going to change up several different versions of the budget, depending on the appetite and the aptitude of the reader. You know, a deep dive, kind of a medium, and then the cliff notes. So it will all be there, but it's going to be packaged slightly differently. And that's a direct outgrowth from some of the work Larissa did with some focus groups on what they liked, what they didn't like about the budget.
Anything about the increase or anything about...
No?
There were some conversations at the last session around having some shared services between the town and the schools, like a grant writer, you know, is there an opportunity there? Or some sort of communication specialist or a PR person? Are there some shared opportunities there for us to look at that?
So we've talked about that here in prior years, haven't we? Sort of the shared communication, shared grant writers, that type of thing? It's a good idea.
Yeah, I think this is the year that, at this point, I'm thinking I will include that position in the budget. Kind of a coordinator position, not a full-blown communications jet. Still, still in formation, and Julie and I are still talking about the advantages of that. But I think we've reached the point where we could really use someone, as was discussed at the last communications meeting, really producing content and it being their full-time job as opposed to all of us kind of, as almost an afterthought, oh, let's, you know, how can we get the word out?
Yeah.
I think there's great value added from a fairly small investment.
Don, Larissa, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I have a hard time remembering, you know, I was a participant last year in asking questions versus answering them this year, so. But it did seem last year, was there more detailed questions around specific things last year? Or was that just me remembering my own questions?
No, I would say that's fair. And I think that's a function of, we probably had triple the number of people involved. So I think it's a function of more folks, more questions and some more substance, frankly. That's not to slight those that participated this year, it's, we just didn't have the turnout.
Do you guys have any thoughts on why that is? Was there anything that's different in terms of how we rolled it out? We got higher turnout last year than this year?
I think they were just so happy with the job we're doing that they don't...
I love the trust and...
That's a sense of humor, but it's a thing with the job.
I don't, I think that, I wonder about the moving locations, if that actually helps? Because I think that the intent is good, like, we'll come to you. But if I'm trying to remember, okay, there's four sessions, I want to get to one of them, and then I got to remember, oh, wait, is it this one at this place at this time? Or would it be better if they were just a consistent time? And then people could just like lock it into their brains.
Where was that, the last meeting? We're just discussing...
We literally decided on the opposite of that.
I could have used that, I could have used that one hour ago.
Well, because this is new. This is a reflection. No, I don't know. I was thinking it during the last meeting too, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to like mess up your flow.
You didn't want to help me out there.
Well, do you really want to do them all on Saturday too?
I don't know, I do...
Because I, I thought that was helpful feedback, because I know a number of seniors who were not going to come out in the wintertime.
And last year, our daytime one was the best attended. And it was here, which is like a more central, I mean, this time we were at the library and that was our, we had the least...
Yeah, my concern or frustration is just not reaching more people. Different people. It's the same old. And that's fine, these are folks that care passionately and are engaged, but... And that's fine, these are folks that care passionately and are engaged, but there's 20,000 other people in this community.
That is a theme that we all feel every time we.
Yeah, we were just talking about that.
And so, we're left with the quandary, does that mean people are satisfied? Or are we not doing a good, good enough job to mix up the locations and the times and convenience? No one has the answer to that.
I think it's just, there's so many competing priorities, you know, and I'm not like, I swear, I don't like work for Thought Exchange, but I think something like that kind of a tool is, is what we have to be thinking about because it's anytime, anywhere and you get to still engage. I just think that, I love the idea of face-to-face communication and I don't think we should not do that. If we're really trying to pull our community, surveys are nice, but not everyone wants to take a whole survey where like with something like this, you literally just put an open-ended question out there and the community makes the themes and, you know, rates, rates the comments and things like that. But I also think having an expert who knows how to engage the community, like that's what they do, they have a public policy background. In a community like Scarborough where people are so engaged, we're, we're actually, I mean, we have the highest voter turnout, so people want to be engaged, it's just a matter of, you know, creating the right recipe, I think. I wish I had a stronger background in.
What's the name of the thing you were talking about Julie?
Thought Exchange.
Thought Exchange.
Do you guys know what Thought Exchange is?
No.
Do you want to just give them a two minute summary? Yeah, real quick, it's basically an online platform that they claim is just as engaging as a meeting, just as engaging as social media, just as effective as a meeting and gets better results than a survey. So, for example, Gorum is using it right now for, to assess their building project that they, they have going on. So, I think they had, it was like 900 and some responses, or 900 and some original thoughts and then they had like 19,000 engagements, which means that people went on and read other people's thoughts and either rated them. And then what it does is it creates like a sociogram, so you can see sort of what thoughts are connected to what. And so, it really helps you see like, oh, there's, you know, that, that thought is an outlier, there's not a lot of people who are, you know, connecting to that thought or here's where the consensus is or the thought is. And then from there, you can use it in a variety of ways, maybe to drive what you're form, your quarterly, community.
Building. Inclusive and voluntary.
Roundtable.
Roundtable. Don't forget the word roundtable there.
Quarterly roundtable is going to be about.
That's a huge area.
But then, there's a whole bunch of other analytics on the backside that you can really dig into and, and read them and read the comments and see how people are reacting to it, so.
And it's confidential and there's no back and forth.
Right.
Yeah, anonymous. And there's no back and forth. So, it doesn't create kind of.
So, if we were to purchase a year license ourselves, it would be $24,000 for the year and you can use it as many times as you want. But we're trying to think as a region, you know, can we get a better rate if multiple districts want to access it? But I think you could spend just as much money or lose, in the case of question one on the local ballot, as much money if you're not able to engage your community. So, it's, I don't have a marketing background, but what's that saying? Like you advertise when your business is doing good, but your business is bad to advertise, right? Something to that.
Tom, you're, the, the position that you're proposing, will that include supporting budget so that they can operate as well for, for media or, or other associated costs?
Yeah, that's part of the process we're going through now. I, I don't see there being huge costs associated with that and maybe, like, it's a good point that we need to explore further. I wasn't contemplating, you know, one of these types of platforms necessarily. I think there's a lot of low-hanging fruit just on what we're already doing and doing a better job of communicating that.
I think even just someone who's like a great technical writer that can listen to us talk in our jargon-filled expert language and boil it down into stuff that the community can connect to and make meaning of. Because as much as we try to do that.
We have some acronyms in there. I'll just grab it in a bunch of words and said, yeah, those are good.
So, whether I seek funding for that, at the very least, I'll, I'll have that position fully developed, at least in concept. So, I found that to be effective to at least, as we talk about priorities, to at least start that conversation, whether it ends up being funded this year, I think it's, I'm certain it's an area we need to go to in some way.
So, is that a great transition to budget?
Yeah.
Budget drivers?
Unless there was any other questions or.
So, what time, you, you have a hard stop at 6:30, right? I'm trying to get out of here.
Oh, seven.
Oh, okay.
But earlier is better, right?
Yeah, but seven.
Earlier is always better.
So, the predictable wage and, you know, healthcare-related, health insurance costs, I'm sure that's true of the school, more so with the school. At this point, very early in the process, we have more than 10 positions potentially proposed by the different departments. Now, all those.
10, 10 new positions?
10 new positions. Now, all those won't pass my red pen, but just so you know, that's, and I want to encourage my staff to come forward with their proposals, make their arguments. We won't be able to tolerate all of them, but there's a number, and, and I assure you, all of them have nearly equal merit. I did take a page out of the school's book this year and encouraged my, my staff to get together and I called it kind of budget shark tank, but they all kind of made their pitch to their colleagues for a couple of reasons. One, it was a good, safe environment, they get some good feedback. I also wanted everyone else to appreciate what else was coming forward and there was some good collaboration that happened out of that. So, that will be a driver of some sort.
Be a huge driver.
Well, I, I'm not at all suggesting that all 10 will come forward in, in my budget proposal, but inevitably there'll be some. And I think it's important for US Finance Committee and the community to understand what your professional staff thinks we need to serve the residents. And that's an important part of the conversation.
Tom, is there any indication on sort of what level positions those are? Are they to a senior level, mid-level?
No, no senior level positions. We have a number in the public safety arena. This is part of a multi-year staffing plan that we've had to shell for a number of years now. So, some of it's not, not new necessarily. Some other positions like the communications coordinator would be a brand-new thing and something that actively, we can live without one. But again, I think we should have those conversations and identify where our priorities are. Debt service, I don't see, there'll be a very modest increase. I don't think you'll, will even notice it in the big picture. I suppose the other big one is how we choose to start fund, uh, funding capital finance. And I know there's a great interest on the part of the finance committee and staff to continue that migration to fund more items through appropriation through the operating budget than through debt finance. And so, depending how far we go down that road, that could have a, be a cost driver.
I mean, for, just for clarification, we have had on the books a policy for years and actually it was re, sort of upped, if you will, when we redrafted the debt policy, but basically saying that the town of Falmouth does this, but as we have depreciation on things that we buy, like, you know, a great example might be a million-dollar ladder truck. What we've been doing in the past is whenever we need that, then we go out to bond and that year we'll bond a million dollars. What some other towns do is say, okay, that ladder truck, that depreciates over 10 years, for the amount of money that it depreciates, you put it, you, you put it into an equipment reserve fund. So, when you need to replace the piece of equipment, you don't have to go to the bond market to get it, you've already sort of pre-funded it. So, people are paying for it as you go along instead of having a blip when you get there. And so, on our books, in the policy, it said, our goal is to get there in six years. So, we're taking a look at starting that. So, maybe we take a six of what that is and work that into the budget because the, the budget driver will be, and we got to be careful, is that we're doing a, a revaluation this year, which is going to add a tremendous amount of property value. But I don't think taxpayers are going to be open to all of that additional revenue being spent. I think there is an expectation, and we'll talk about this in the budget goals, that there should be an expectation that as their property goes up in value, that their mill rate should come down. So, it, it moderates the impact of taxes. So, so there are some things that we had targeted as a, as a finance committee that with, this may be a year we can start doing some of the things like the capital reserve, but I think that weaves into the other conversations we'll have as, as we progress through the budget.
At this, I'd like to add one point to the, what Peter just said and I'll, I'll hold getting into details until we talk about goals. But a sense I have is that because of a couple of things that are happening, an expectation of additional funding from the state, the completion of the, the revow and are continuing to do the, the residential revow and some other things, you know, expectation that maybe we had belts tightened for a while and now it's time to loosen it a little bit. You know, I, I think there's a risk, a real risk of people having an expectation that we're going to, you know, address everything this year or somehow it's going to be an easier budget session. So, I, and then not to, not to be contrarian too much about it, but I think it's been very important for us as a committee to be cautious and careful about that or to be attuned to that so that we're, you know, understanding the needs, but also, you know, not giving rise to an expectation that, you know, we're going to, you know, be able to address a lot of things. For example, in our 10, 10 new positions of, you know, the municipal, municipal side, for example, I think it, it's going to be important for us to be attuned to it, but also cautious about, about expectations.
So, what else we see, Tom? Anything else that's.
Well, on the good side, Don alluded to it. It's not a, like I said, it's a driver, but in a good way. Based on the governor's proposed budget, there will be increase in municipal revenue sharing. I think that's in the, in the tune of $220,000 additional.
Yep.
And then the home set exemption going up to 67%.
Yep.
Will be about $75,000 additional dollars to us. And I don't, I think it's too early to know what impact there might be on the education side. It's still in the process.
It is too early because the Department of Education sent us an nasty email this morning and said, stop calling us. We're working on it.
We're supposed to have a Friday.
Sorry.
We're supposed to have ED 279 that Friday.
The, the good news is that the reason they don't want us to call them up is because they're working feverishly to get our documents out and, and to do the forecast for us. So, they're saying Friday we'll have what's called the ED 279, which is the subsidy printout for each district that, that tells you what you're going to be getting. So, I'm pretty excited about that.
I think we can expect to probably still be minimum receivers though.
My, my, okay, so I know we'll be minimum receivers. I'm, I'm counting on that being a small increase to subsidy. My hope and, and little gleam of, of positive feeling is that we may actually jump back up a little bit higher, but I don't really know how that's going to look like.
For those of you new to this game, the good news is we won't be losing money and that has been the story of the decade, basically, that we've been hemorrhaging.
We'll be scooching backwards just.
So, there's something for that.
And the first time in a number of years, we don't have any sort of revenue gap. With that being said, there are a lot of needs coming in, as I said earlier, and so we're anticipating obviously increased personnel needs across the board. And Kate, are you done?
Are you all set, Tom?
Yep, I am.
Okay, so, yeah, on the school side, as Tom indicated, we've got some personnel drivers. I think you've probably heard me say, until you want to fall over and die, that we have about 75% of our budget in personnel costs. And so, this year we have the negotiation of the teachers and professionals bargaining agreement, which is our biggest group. And so, as we go into the budget conversations, we don't have a salary table for those folks for next year. And negotiations will be running along parallel with the budget development process. So, at the moment, that's going to be, you know, obviously it's a big factor. We're going to be making some assumptions so that we can allow negotiations to go forward, but that'll be a cost driver for sure. Secondly, we've heard from our friends at Anthem Health Insurance that they're going to be raising our rates potentially as much as 10%. We have, they work, not to get too far into the weeds, but they work on the basis now of a medical loss ratio, which is a way of making sure that they're recouping their costs. And Scarborough's medical loss ratio for the last year was not fabulous.
What was it?
I'm sorry?
What was it?
I don't know. I just know that they've said, eh, you know, I'm not that great. This is as, as scientific as they've gotten with me so far. What that means is that we're probably going to be in the higher level of rate increases across the state, but they haven't set the top level yet. So, within the next couple of weeks, they're going to be setting the top level so we'll know what the maximum is, which will help us determine what, you know, the worst-case scenario is to budget for. And then they'll actually, they'll produce actual rates in the middle of April. So, we will come out at first reading not really knowing the answer, which is pretty typical. And we'll have a guess in there, but we'll know that that's the worst that it can be and then we'll hope that in the middle of April before second reading, we'll be able to drop that down a little bit. The third big personnel factor is in main purse costs, mainstay retirement costs. The employer share's been raised again for fiscal '20. It's going up from 3.97% to 4.16%, I think. My coffee's wearing off. I lose the third decimal point. But that's, it's not a massive driver, but it's going to add another half, $50,000 or so, just without any changes in, in payroll to our operating budget. So, those kinds of costs are, they're kind of mechanical in a way. I mean, it sort of is what it is, but it's something that, that we're, we're juggling as we start building the budget and it's obviously a good factor. And then the next thing is what do we do about staffing? What do we do about class sizes? What do we do about some of those increasing needs that we're seeing coming in, particularly at the K two level? Both addressing that with, with personnel, with professional development and with space, with facilities. So, those are our biggies and.
So, when you say space, are you anticipating a capital expenditure for space?
We're talking right now about expanding room at, at East Corner School and.
Modular.
Yes.
Yeah, two modular classrooms is the, is the plan that we've sort of got out on the table with the long-range planning committee and we've been sort of fighting through some ideas and, and thoughts about how that might look and trying to get some costs together. So, whether that goes into the FY '20 capital budget or a piece of it does or we find other ways around that, that's something that's out there. And there, in the capital budget, there, the other big driver that I'm hearing right now, and we're just beginning to draft that, is the HVAC system, heating, ventilation, air conditioning at the middle school. The K twos are also a little wonky, but the middle school is starting to have kind of catastrophic failure all through the HVAC system, which was designed to run for 20 years and now is on year 25. I feel like I just went bleh. Did I miss anything, Julie?
No, I think that was.
And that's, that's very, very preliminary. I guess I could speak to the, to the process just for a second. We did talk about going around to staff, doing the listening sessions there. We've had our leadership individual meetings. Each department has come together with Julie, Joanne, Monique, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and myself, sometimes other stakeholders hopping in at the table. And we've gone through and worked on what we call our level services budget. That's going back to the leadership team tomorrow for a review. And then we've also put out what we call new proposals and those have been vetted and preliminarily prioritized.
That's our shark tank.
That's our shark tank and, and we'll be circling back to the group with some of those, once we know where we land on level services and on the revenue side so that we know, you know, what, what the impact would be of doing nothing more than what we need to do.
What we currently do.
Exactly.
And we, just in terms of sorting the proposals, we do what's required, meaning we have no choice, we have to do it typically because it's driven by some sort of law or.
Contract.
Contract. Then what's a high priority, mid and low priority. And to Don's point earlier, we are always having this conversation of how do we communicate, you know, what we're investing in this year, but also putting the community on notice of what some of the long-range needs are. And so, one example I would give would be the career pathways position that has been in our budget. This will be the third year you're going to see that. I imagine it emerging as a higher priority this year. We've done all we can, you know, stretching existing staff thinly in order to deliver the different types of career exploration opportunities. the different types of career exploration opportunities that our students very much need in a 21st century educational setting, but we're really at the point where we need to, we need to take the next step and make that investment. So, again, this is something that people have been hearing us talking about, and then we'll do the same thing when it comes to some of the other positions. And the school board, you'll, you'll have a lot of choice in terms of what you're going to be able to include or not include as we develop the budget as well. And the way that Kate set this up last year, which I think was awesome, was after we finish ranking all of the priorities, required, high, mid, low, we'll set it up, Kate will set it up for you, so you can see, okay, well, what does it mean if we added that investment? You know, what's the impact on both the net and the gross budget? And so you'll be able to see, you know, we might be talking about a $20,000 investment, well, what does that really do to the bottom line? Or an $80,000 investment, what does that do to the bottom line? I think it's really helpful.
Yeah. Kate, earlier when you said level services, you said it's what we currently do?
Mm-hmm.
And then I think, Julie, you changed it to what we need?
No.
Or around.
Kate said need. It's basically if we.
There's the differentiation there for me is, do we look at what we did last year and say, is there anywhere we can become more efficient?
Always. That happens in those rooms that Kate and I were talking about when we're developing level services. And then even in the proposal process, we ask principals and department heads to think about, you know, is this a new investment or is this a reallocation or realignment of existing resources? So they're always trying to think, not just how do I add more, but how do I use existing staff or existing resources to its full potential? So we're, we're constantly looking for efficiencies. But level services, the easiest way to think about it is if we close the doors in June and open them back up in August, adding nothing, doing nothing new and different. And so Kate will go through a whole refinement process once we know who's actually retiring, you know, is there any breakage? That's part of that level services budget development process as well.
Yeah, we do go line by line with, with folks who are, each person is in charge of their individual cost center, so we're looking at things as, wow, you, you know, here's your professional development line, you only spent this much, do you need what you're asking for? Well, no, actually, we need this. Here's your supply line, can we refine that? Can we lock that down? We definitely reduce as many lines as we increase, but because personnel makes up so much of the cost, what we do there is we assume that the folks that are here today are the same folks that are going to be here next year, unless we know for sure that there are gonna be retirements and there's gonna be churning their schedules.
Any questions? Comments, Julie?
The only last case I would add, just in terms of that process, because each year we're refining that and making it, I would argue, even better, that we also wanted to make sure that we have instructional equity as we look across the board at resources. So trying to become more formulaic and how do we, how do we determine how much discretionary spending, you know, an elementary school has versus a middle school versus a high school, and looking at students' needs and staffing needs to make sure that we don't have one school that's receiving much more funding than another if they're delivering the same type of program. Don, you got a question?
Yeah, I was just, I was wondering, Kate, or if anyone knew, what's the number, do you know about half the number of people in the bargaining unit or units that are in negotiations now?
It's like 315.
I was gonna say 320, but yeah, that's sort of.
And it's mainly instructional staff and professionals, you said?
Anyone who has a professional license, so it's teachers.
All classroom teachers, all support teachers, nurses, guidance counselors, social workers, and then the special education specialists.
Ask a question?
Thank you.
Sure. Do you have an example of like last year where you might have reallocated staff instead of creating a new position, like a concrete example? That, because you spoke about reallocating rather than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely. I should know right off the top of my head.
Was last year the middle school sort of STEM reworking?
So, well, one example would be the redesign of the educational technicians into the IT positions. So that was something that, like right on our one pager, we really clearly articulated that. We also reduced two teaching positions at the middle school due to decreased enrollment, but that enabled us to add positions at the K-2 due to increased enrollment.
Yep.
Those would be two examples.
Shifting a foreign language teacher to Wentworth so that we could increase access to students at a lower grade level.
Yep.
And then the music program at the eighth grade, we were able to use existing staff to expand that programming so that all eighth grade students have some sort of either general music or band offering, which was not happening before.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this might be a good place to introduce sort of, you know, budget sort of targets, if you will. And after listening to this, I think, you know, it's gonna be in the past where we've sort of targeted as a 3% or so overall increase, but I think we're gonna have to do it differently this year because we won't know. Tom, when, we won't know, and it's gonna be distorted by, you're projecting about a $500 million increase in a raise up.
No, I don't think I've put a number to it yet.
But it's big. I mean, it's, it's a significant.
I'm not so sure about that.
Okay, well, what's different this year is there's a reevaluation going on, so we won't know that upfront. So one thing we had always talked about is trying to target, this year, the finance committee hasn't met, the town council hasn't met, but I would suspect our, at least our public or some of our public is gonna be thinking about a 3% overall increase in expenditures. And so what we asked last year as a process is, show us what that 3% budget looks like. What does that mean? Ten new positions on the municipal side and some of the other things we've talked about sure sounds like we're gonna come in north of that 3%. Maybe not, but I, but I think, so I just refer to this group, how do we wanna see the budget? In the past, what we've always struggled with and what we asked last year maybe is, show us what a 3% budget is. Identify what you cannot do, and then we're able to take that 3% budget and add on the things that needed to be added on, and we'll have those conversations as we go along. I don't know, I don't know how this group feels about that process, but I think, I think that is sort of where we've been. How many years have we used 3%? Tom, the last.
Well, I want to be careful. Typically, the 3% is based on, it's on tax rate, not on spending. It's a big difference.
Well, I understand, but how do, how do we have, if we're not gonna know what the reevaluation is? You know, I, I'm not sure the way we did it last year of saying, here's a range of what it might be, so the budget increase might be a negative 2% to a positive 4% or something like those quarters. I don't think that's the best necessarily way to do it.
I'm not, I don't, I sort of disagree, I'm just saying historically that 3% target has been on the final tax rate.
So, so again, maybe the work, I don't think we'll settle it tonight, but I think this group needs to decide what is the budget target? If we can't do it on the tax rate because we're not gonna know it, because we're not gonna know the revow, what has been the historical rate of increases in expenditures? And is that the appropriate target or not? But I, but I think, I think flying blind's not gonna work. We need to kind of say, here's a number.
Right.
That we should target. If we can't hit that number, let's talk about what it is we can't do. And then I think last year we talked about, then we can, at least on the municipal side, we can make the decision about what we have on.
Would it make more sense to focus on the net as opposed to expenditures?
I was gonna say, for the school department, there's sort of an intermediate level, which is expenditures, and then net, which is our ask of the tax resources. Because our revenues are kept in a separate world. It doesn't, we don't really, we have to show our revenues and we have to show our tax ask before it even gets to the point of discussing valuation and tax rate.
Right. I mean, I don't think we have to solve it tonight, but I, but I think we should give some thought to what those targets, we can all agree on, make sense to be the conversation starter, however we do that.
Yeah, and I want to be crystal clear as to what that, everyone understanding what that target is, because historically, there's been some confusion.
Right, right, that's why we're trying to.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I think the next meeting of this group, we should all be in agreement, all understand what it is we're all talking about, so there is no confusion, and decide on a methodology instead of getting so far down the road that we can't. So I, I mean, I don't know if others agree, that's, that's just.
Well, I just want to build on the points that you're making in Tom's response as well, that, you know, in the past, we've, you know, we've always had the timing effect, right? We don't know what the state's gonna give us, so we don't know, you know, most recently, what the effect of the reevaluation will be, you know, when will the budget be drawn? Will it be before or after the impact of the reevaluation? These are big assumptions and fairly big numbers that could have a big impact on, on the whole, you know, budget expectations and what ranges we're setting. So I think it's absolutely critical for us to be perfectly clear what we want those to be going forward. And, you know, I think that, you know, with the size of the increase of value in revaluation, I, I saw some figures, what, is it $3 billion now, but the value of our $4 billion is the value of our total, total taxes, our assessed value.
Total valuation, yes. Yeah, and Tom, I thought you did an exhibit for the finance committee last time we met that showed what you thought that number was gonna be with the revow.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly model that, and I expect we'll be forced to. It's just a little more challenging model this time because residential evaluation, not all properties will react the same.
Yeah.
The adage is, third go up, the third stay the same, or third go down. And so trying to understand, you know.
Right, so that, that's the only reason I'm suggesting this year, I think we need a different methodology, because estimating what the revow's gonna do to be able to talk about the potential tax rate increases is gonna be difficult. So I think we need to pick some other marker that we can all agree on, and however we do that, I just think we need to give it some thought.
And I think there's a fair amount of dialogue and education we need to have around that, so people are really clear, you know, are going to do, whether it's the same, you know, whether we stay focused on the mill rate or not, but just to say, hey, here's what's happened, here are the big events that have really occurred, and here's what we're recommending, you know, as a joint committee in terms of a methodology that hopefully everybody can follow and that we can hold to.
Tom, what are the timelines for the revaluation? You guys are saying we won't have it for the budget, so one more one.
Well, what happens every year, and it's, revow adds a unique little twist to it, but the budget is always finalized in May, June timeframe. The total value of the town isn't set until mid-August, so there's always almost a three month offset, as our normal course declares. It gets further complicated by some anomalies, like a revow that will have a unique, you can't look to history to kind of suggest what that might be. We've become pretty good at estimating in normal circumstances.
Normal circumstances.
What we could expect by just general appreciation and new value to the town. These sorts of things just kind of add a little wrinkle to the equation. But that offset is always a challenge, that you're finalizing a budget, the voters are asked to, you're asked to vote on it, and the voters are asked to vote on it, before you know all the information, at least in terms of what the tax rate impact will be.
And we.
I don't know the way around that. We're gonna have to deal with that offset.
We, we all go out and vote above a tax rate that we think is going to happen, and then the tax rate is set in October, and we find that it's a little bit different.
Historically, it's been lower, though.
It has. We're conservative in those estimates, and, you know, we underpromise and overdeliver in almost all cases in that regard.
But I, but I think the suggestion this year, because of that wrinkle, and Tom, I think, at least in prior documents, we do expect the revow of the residential side to be significant. I mean, it's not a small number.
No.
I mean, it's gonna be in hundreds of millions. So it, it, it has an impact. So I think this year, because of that, and if we don't wanna confuse our constituents, I think we need to focus on another metric that can say, this is what we expect to deliver, and if we don't deliver that, what are the reasons why we're not doing that? And we can articulate it. I'm not lobbying for any particular metric tonight, but I'm just saying, it's something we should think about and try to nail down by the next joint meeting, and the town council will be working, and the finance committee of the town council will be working on our own piece. But it's just a thought for us to put on the table, that the way we've looked at it in prior years, and this year, it sounds like, I mean, I don't think I've seen 10 positions in the municipal budget in a long time, so that's a, that's a big, I mean, that's.
Peter, to be fair, I'm almost always confronted with double-digit requests. You just don't see them, so.
Well, I understand, I understand.
I'm hiding you from the truth.
Your appearance hurts.
So.
There's nothing unique and different about that, so I don't.
Okay, but just, so I, I just think we need to, you know, do that work, as Don suggested, there's real clear metrics that we're using that are fair and reasonable, and we can talk about them.
Yeah, at least around this table, everyone needs to understand what is that target, what's the interpretation, and then we need to communicate it.
I would ask that it becomes the third bullet right here on the goals sheet, so that way it's clearly documented as well.
Remind me, has that been a joint process to establish that target, or is that the top-down from the council establishing that?
My recollection is it's typically a town finance committee directive.
Yeah.
Given to me, to the school department. Maybe I'm wrong about that.
That's how it's been, but it's a whole new world.
Fair enough.
It's true.
So my sense is we're gonna hear about it anyway, whether we, you know, comes to town. My sense is we'll, you know, be hearing about the needs loud and clear. You know, building on the point that Julie suggested about adding that as a goal, and being clear of the methodology, but, you know, we're talking about the, there are opportunities here, assuming there will be some flexibility in addition to addressing unmet needs that people have talked about. You know, I really think this is an excellent discussion and analysis, and, you know, in the, the comprehensive report from the last fiscal year, but they talked about the fund balance and the chance to kind of build that up to a certain level. And there are typically five things, if you, if we get that number, you know, above a certain figure, I guess 10% was the goal, 10% is the operating budget. There's a lot of things on there that go, something like offset unfunded liabilities, use it for future budget cycles to stabilize property tax rate, fund future capital expenditures or projects. Peter mentioned some things we're doing, you know, on the town side there, the town council side, retirement of debt, and finally, taxpayer refund was, you know, number five on the list of those five things you could do.
The other thing that the town council finance committee has recognized too is we have a ton of unrecorded or unfunded liabilities for pension, right, Tom?
Yeah.
And so part of our thought was if we ever do get in that place where we have excess cash, to start funding those liabilities, because we think at some point in time, that's gonna be a mandate, that municipalities start to have to fund pension liabilities.
GASB requirement of other post-employment.
We're not starting, we have to report it, so the time is around the corner, probably.
Yeah, because now, now the accounts are. So, I mean, there's a lot of competing, so that's, I think that makes this year a little more complex, because we do have the revow. That's gonna generate some additional potential revenue. How do we wanna use that revenue as a town? What's the right mix of the things that you just read, the unmet needs? So I think it just behooves this group as an agenda item, is, you know, how, how are we gonna vector to that?
So is it the intent to have this group finalize that budget target, or is it a town finance function? And I ask that just because the sooner we can get that guidance, the better.
Right. Well, I think, I think we, we know it's our neck, you know, that's for our work to do. The finance committee to do that, at least come up with what, a recommendation and see if that resonates here.
And socialize with this group.
Yeah.
Our next meeting is 13th of March.
This, this group.
The joint group. Right, but presumably you guys would be before that.
Yeah, sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So having, you know, been the first time sort of involved in this, can you guys give me some background where that 3% came from and why we're so, been so stuck on that number historically?
Not sure where it came from originally. I think at some point in time, I mean, the questions we've always have gotten is, you know, especially back in the years when people's wages were flat or increasing 1% or 2% and CPI was 1% or 2%, we got a lot of pushback, as you know, from the prior budget cycles about why, you know, why is a town going out more than that? Because it's actually more of an increase than the 3%, because we have, we have the revenue growth too. We did some work, we, you know, there was some, there's, there's information that shows municipalities are, and schools are different than, you know, the, the general, you know, labor market. So we arrived at 3% as being a reasonable, instead of a 1% or 2%, we built in an extra recognition of it's, it's a different animal. And that's, and that's where we've been, that's where we've tried to target, that's where we've successfully, I think our average tax increases over the last couple of years have been under 3%.
Yeah, a little less than 2.5% on average.
So it seemed to be, one, something that we did socialize with our community, and they seem to be accepting, maybe not happily, but accepting. So that's sort of where it came from. It may not be appropriate this year. So that's sort of where it came from, it may not be appropriate this year. I mean, that's why the conversation has to take place about what seemed to work in prior years, and I think Tom has done this for us. If, if it's at 3%, what is it we don't do? Then we can say, we can't, we can't live without that. But it's also a way, I mean, I think one year we did it, we didn't do beach cleanings on Scarborough Beach, and we pretty quickly learned that that was not a really sound decision, so.
We did not call.
I'm not sure about that.
So I think the other thing is just, there's no scientific data for it, but a feeling that that was the upper limit of acceptability, that anything below that, people might not like, but they could kind of understand. And we've had some conversations, given our reception at the polls, whether or not that assumption's correct, whether that should be something else. But I, from my part, it was just a recognition that that's kind of the upper limit of what people could live with without storming town hall.
So what you were saying, Tom, is that 3% was the tax rate not spending? So we're saying, we're at the 3%, which is the increase in your tax. But we don't know the reval, so therefore we don't know the increased tax rate, so.
We never know, we never know the town value.
We'll model that and be conservative in that, and be able to get some comfort around that number, but it's important for us to articulate what is the target, because those are, those are different, for sure. And I guess the other thing I would add is, I'll pitch for, factoring in the value somehow in that equation, I think is important. In a growth community, we can't possibly be, we're asked to do more next year than we are this year, despite we're to our growing community. And so I think it only stands to reason that some of that new value that comes in as a result of development goes to fund some of those new services.
Well, it does though, Tom, I mean, that every year in the past practice, any new development goes into the appraised value, all of that. That's why when the mill rate is, the tax rate increase is 3%, expenditures actually have gone up 4% to 5%.
Right, and that's what that's shown, right.
So, so we have factored in, as we grow and we get more revenue from commercial and residential properties that come online, that revenue is flowing directly to offset services. What's different this year is we're not bringing, the reval isn't bringing any new property on, you're just saying the existing properties are worth a lot more. So what people really see, they're going to be impacted two ways. Someone that's had a 20, you said our town is about 80% of the appraised value, so some people are going to see a 20% increase in their assessed value. And then if the tax rate goes up, you know, 3% or 4%, you're going to see some people seeing a 23%, 24% increase in their tax rate. That, we just need to be sensitive to that, I mean, just like when we did the commercial reval, we had some businesses that had increases of 30% or 40% in their taxes, which is a big bump in one year. And so I just think we need to be casual, we can't take all of the commercial, the reval, it's not new growth, it's not new development, it's the same house, consuming the same services, so those shouldn't count as new dollars to spend.
Yeah, I was responding to Sarah's question about historically where the rationale, that reval is a different animal.
It is a different animal, and we just, we need to collectively decide what's the best, how to treat that new animal that's, it's different this year. So we just need to think about it, that's all.
Well, collectively, but I understood you saying that's a town finance decision to make.
I mean, but it's one town, one budget sort of concept is what we've adopted, so what people are going to, so, you know, again, once, in the past, when we have set whatever the town council has set, we've come back and talked about it here, and then you guys submit, when the board of education and Julie submit their budget, that was a guideline that was sort of there. It's not always come in at that.
Do you want to hear what we say too, or?
Yeah, I mean, the thought is.
Is that the discussion we're going to have?
I think, you know, and I can't speak for Sean, my thought would be, we need, we'll do the work as a town council that we need to do, so we can get clear direction to Tom, and then we will share that, and we can have a conversation, and it's up to you guys whether you think that's reasonable or not. But just be aware that when the budgets all get aggregated up, it still has to be approved by taxpayer. And that's all we're trying to do, is if you guys are to do something different, then there has to be a sort of rationale. But the intent of this group was to really say, at least, you know, how do we share our thinking, how do we have that conversation? How do we listen to each other and see, and run the same pitch?
I think one of the unique things about a school budget is that we don't have, schools don't have the opportunity to generate revenue.
Right.
The only revenue we, source of revenue we have is what comes from the state in terms of our, in terms of our general purpose aid or from the federal government in terms of entitlement. And given the success of our community, we are a minimum receiver school district. So I think that that also has to be taken into the formula and how we're calculating how we support our schools. And although there's much more money going into the education formula, if you saw, a lot of it's already earmarked for pre-K, which is not something that we're exploring in FY '20 here in Scarborough, mostly because of our space limitations. So there will be.
So it's you and Sean and Dawn on the town finance, is that right?
Well, I mean, our normal process is usually, we're going to on the 25th have the whole town council convene to really talk about goals for ourselves, which will be part of that process is this conversation. Then it kind of comes to the finance to, you know, have, you know, kind of build on that, and then, so we'll have clarity on the 25th.
I think we're reasonable. We're going to be, everything's going to be crystal clear.
Yeah, it's going to be crystal clear.
Like, all answers will be reasonable.
This is a lot at one time.
Goal is for our next, so you guys will go away and come back and make the proposal, but likewise, we'll do the same and have conversations with Julie and Kate, and then I think our goal should be to agree on what that target is and how we go about that at the next meeting.
Yep, that's great.
Everyone okay with that? Yep, and obviously we'll chat with Sean about this too.
Yeah, I was going to say, it sounded from the outside, kind of watching the exchange, that you, it seemed like it was going to be more collaborative, but we're going to do it the same way we always have. That's what I was hearing, and I think, I feel like that's what Alicia was hearing too, so. Not that I'm disagreeing with anything you're saying, Peter, but I think Sarah just summed that up nicely, because I can see why you wanted to.
We're on the same page.
Yeah, right.
Anything else on that? You look like you have something to say.
Well, yeah, thank you, because I'm not really on this committee, but thank you for letting me sit in and listen to the conversation. I haven't been invited to the table before like this in the past, so it's, I think that in and of itself is nice. But I just want to echo what Paul said, and I want to be mindful, because I do think it is a new world and a new, a new way of trying to do business. And why not entertain the idea of coming up with that goal collectively, truly collectively and inclusively? Just because we've always done something one way doesn't mean we should continue to always do it that way. And I think, you know, trying to figure out that conversation, as difficult as it might be, is truly the way you get, again, people to buy into that one budget, one town, one budget piece, and you come at the community truly united, versus, this is what we're saying, this is what our goal is, and.
It was given to us by town council, you can just say it.
And I don't, I'm not, I don't necessarily agree with that or like that. It's been, that has never felt right or good for me. Again, I've never been invited to even sit at this table, and I cried, so, anyway, just for what it's worth, that's my two cents.
Probably 10, find more than you want.
Regardless of who sets the target, the sooner we get it.
Yeah.
Having hard implications, thinking about getting guidance on March 13th, when we have to deliver a budget two weeks later.
So that was what I was going to ask, do we need to move that meeting up?
Yes, I don't think we can wait a month for that sort of guidance.
So I'm not going to attempt to suggest a time without Sean here, because he seems to have the craziest calendar of us all, but why don't you give me, I'll take that as an action.
Well, when do you need it by?
Today?
Yeah, as soon as you can, really, and I don't mean it too dramatically.
But I guess, Peter.
We're in full budget formation mode, so.
When do you guys have your meeting?
Well, we're not getting together as a town council till the 25th, right? Is that the right date?
I was expecting that would be when she would get it.
Yeah.
At the team building.
Team building, yeah.
The 25th is a Monday?
Yeah.
February 25th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, in the past, that's where the, at least the goals were set.
At the team building, then?
Yeah, at that, at that.
Is that an all-day thing or an evening thing?
Three hours, five to eight on.
Three hours, Friday.
Yeah.
It has been nearly impossible to find the dates.
That's not bad.
We're not changing. We're not changing.
Yes.
But if we did something that week, like Wednesday after the, I know Sean can do Tuesdays or Thursdays, but I know that Wednesday after, you know, potentially.
Not to go on a tangent, but are the, are the dates that are on that calendar right now, I think they're all things that we already, they're like.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh my God. So those are, those are kind of set, and we're just trying to maneuver in the midst of them. Colette was asking me if those are, like, ready to be booked, and I'm thinking, yeah.
If we could meet on the 27th, that would be very helpful.
Okay. Is that for you? You can't do anything before 5:30, is that right?
Me? I can make things work.
5:30 would be great for me, I have a meeting with the FCA till 5:00.
My ideas are going to make me miss my cornhole playoffs. So disappointing.
Actually, I won't be, I won't be here, so I'll sub in for you.
Unless it's before 4:00, you can do it before 4:00.
So that could be a single line of agenda, right? I mean, for sole folks, so it doesn't need to be a, a meeting necessarily.
Yeah, so let me check with Sean, I'll text him after this and see if he can block that off. And so we'll book tomorrow.
You're looking up, but.
February 27th.
Alicia, you know if that works for you.
Well, if we're talking about after work hours, I know that it works for me.
I know who's on the school board, but can you tell me who's a, what group of people comprise the leadership council?
The leadership council consists of all of the central office administrators, all of the principals, assistant principals, and all directors and assistant directors, so there's about 22 of us in total, 23 counting you.
Thanks.
So the second to last thing we had on the agenda was to review the calendar. I have some highlights, highlighted dates up there, I also have copies of it, I don't know if it's worth, if you guys have questions, if you want to go through it line by line, or if you'd rather end early, keep this or anything.
Well, I think my wonder was, are we all committed to the dates that are already on there? So I think that we've just come up with, like, public meetings, the flow of that as it needs to proceed to the referendum, so.
Yeah.
I don't have any particular needs beyond that.
The one thing I would add is the first and second leadership council school board meetings, we also encourage town councillors to attend those if you're able. And so we're, usually this is a long, full-day event, we've decided to break it into two smaller chunks, so it's 8:30 to 11:30 on the first, on April 2nd. And then 4 till 7.
It's, uh, yeah.
6:30.
Can you get me a, can you get me a guest from school?
I'm sure I could connect a few standards to it.
Sarah's about, four of those dates, or 8:30?
Do you take them out, right?
They're on your end.
I got a half price.
The school provided workshop, part one and part two.
And the third is what?
Four P.
They're just missed, they're.
They're not shaded, they're.
They're shaded, right.
That's not a holiday, is it, this summer?
And your town council workshop isn't on here as well, and probably should be.
Right.
Yeah, and I can ask Colette if she would share what she has.
All right, let's collaborate tomorrow, we can get this to know.
Any other comments on the calendar?
So you're going to have the 27th, I assume?
Yep, or not, yeah, well, assuming Sean can do it, yeah.
If Sean's available.
So we've got a finance committee, town council finance committee meeting on the 27th, 5:30 to 7:30. So you're just talking about having this joint meeting after that, right after that, so?
Those are already.
Four together. Or we could do the first.
First, then we can carry on with our business.
First few minutes to do that, to just agree on the goal.
Sorry, you have a, they have a town council.
Finance, finance.
Finance committee, town council finance committee meeting that night, anyway, but, you know, we could, I'm sure we could just go on.
If you've got the first agenda, and then carry on with your other business.
That would be a good idea. Any public comments?
John, chief, thanks for doing this. I've been doing a lot of research on what we spend for our schools versus what some of the other districts in the state spend, and I just wanted to comment, historically, we spend less, in some cases significantly less, than all of our peers. So those are districts that have similar demographics to us, they have similar standards of living. And that's both when you look at it by how much we spend per student and how much we spend per teacher. The other thing I, that I was surprised at, that I found, was that we receive significantly less funding than our peers from the state. So I think we received around 4% or 5% of our funding in 2017 from the state. Our, the average for our peer group, which is five different districts, like Falmouth and Cumberland and Freeport, Kennebunk, their average was almost 17%. So if you blow that back over eight years, that's almost $26 million that our peers have had to work with that we haven't. And I think that's created an interesting dynamic for our town. It creates a lot of friction, because we're trying to compete with these high-caliber school districts, and we're doing so very well. But we have significantly less funding from the state, and overall, we're struggling. I just wanted to share that information.
Thanks, Sean. Any other comments?
Agenda item for next time, we convene as a joint council, but not when we're going to piggyback on the town council's finance meeting, yes. I would like to discuss expectations and roles at the budget outreach meetings, so that we all know. For those of us who, this is our first go-round.
What is it, the 13th of what?
So we're keeping the March 13th, but we're adding the 27th, just a quick one topic, got it, okay.
Any other agenda recommendations for our next one? We have time.
Do we want to talk about the budget book information that Larissa gathered, or do we feel like we've got that in the handle on that?
Well, again, it really shouldn't be that much different, it's just going to be packaged in kind of three different ways, depending on the applicant, the user. So I don't think you see a big difference.
Does it have page numbers?
Continuous page numbers.
Pageination is really important.
Continuous page.
Really important. Et table contents.
Aggressive feedback.
Continuous pageation.
All right, whoa, we're having it now.
Continuous page.
Continuous pageation. I love seeing it, sorry.
We'll see what we can do, good feedback.
What it means, you know what it means, right?
No.
All right, so you have section one of the budget, pages one through 25, and then the next section, pages one through 25. And people, as we're talking about the budget, we think you're really confused at home, because you're like, oh, tab two, so, page one, why? You have continuous pageination. Like a creative imagination, it's much easier for people to document loss.
Is that actually a word?
I learned it, yes, and it is.
We learned it, communicate. The only thing is, we'll.
Larissa says it is a word.
It's a word. Pageination, a continuous pageination.
What did you get that number?
And I was just so excited, I said it before you.
I can't say it anymore, it doesn't matter no more, I can't say it.
Where did you get yours?
I'll forgive you if I'm like the same.
All right, now I'm on the meeting room three for the day.
I know, I'm not chatting right now. How do you know what's in it?